One of the other members voted on the street that he was on when he goes in.
No, they voted to send a letter and that was.
All right. Hey, did new estate get pushed back?
It's not a public address.
Not a public address? Never been accepted by the town.
When you're talking new estate, a subdivision?
No.
Never been accepted by the.
Engineers that.
Well, it's still a town way. It has to be.
Well, that doesn't, you can do work on. It doesn't. Doesn't make a big difference in the amount of the work that the town can do, but town council will.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Aren't you gonna have to charge betterments to do all the work? It's not a town way. Goes back to being private then, I guess. Our next meeting is tenth, eleventh, whatever it is.
June, July, July tenth.
Are we filling up on that one already?
Um, let's see, the Russell Street Concord Properties project is coming in. Um, this Bennett, Ms. Anderson subdivision, they're not gonna finish tonight because you don't have the final comments yet.
Is Fletcher's coming tonight?
No, they're not coming tonight. They asked to continue. And they requested an extension.
Okay.
We've got all paperwork we need for that.
When are we meeting with the selectmen about master plan?
Um, master plan discussion's gonna be on, on the tenth. Yep.
Okay.
And then, because Keith will meet with you and you'll meet with the selectmen the following Monday.
Peter, wanna flip the switch?
Looking for some land out in the Bitterroot Valley.
Yeah.
Friend of mine has some.
Mm-hmm.
It is. The audio is on.
Um, are we seven? I don't know.
We're not quite seven yet.
I have six fifty-nine.
So you sent us something on the tenth?
I sent it on the tenth. I didn't send anything on the tenth. I was in the office. You probably got it delivered on the other. Like I said, I'm just never sure if, when I send things with lots of attachments, how it goes through and when it goes through. But I was glad to hear that it did get there.
All right, we should do the pledge of allegiance to this staff. Hey.
Hey, are we ready?
We're ready. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, why don't we start off with a little bit of board business for a couple of minutes? Middle, you're gonna do the middle school parking right off the bat?
Sure, we can do that. I sent you sort of a copy of the partial plan for the middle school where the drop-off area is. We're looking just to eliminate the stripes on the drop-off lane.
What's the main reason for that?
The school department has requested, oh, for removing it? School department requested it be removed because some people are parking there and then taking kids to the front door. And some people are dropping off when they park and the kids are crossing where the other cars are coming in. They felt it was not safe.
And there's no objection to it, I assume?
Not according to the highway department, not according to the police department, fire department, or the school department. So?
The school department requested it.
Yeah, so the school requested it.
He told me that he ran it by police department and they were fine.
Yes, one advantage of that is that being out there during campaign times and so on, at least a dozen times I've seen people come in and drive up to the area having no idea where to park, then realizing they should have turned the left beforehand, the sign's confusing. Then they drive the length of the crosswalks. And I've pointed out to the school committee, the chair of school committee, no one seems to care. But, you know, sooner or later someone's gonna get run over. I mean, certainly if they drop that, they could have a sign, "All parking," and show definitively where it is. That would make life easier, but it's a matter of who has control there. And the only person I've known that's done anything there is Diane Corrie during election time, which she has no control. But, you know, something needs to be done. So maybe it'd be a reasonable suggestion to suggest they change the signs so it's clear for people to come there the first time.
Well, they just wanna get rid of the parking.
Right, but I'm saying there'd be a advantage if there's no parking whatsoever. You could clearly have the signs as all parking. And, you know, just drop off wherever. Yeah, it sounds like a reasonable thing to approve.
I don't, I don't agree.
They're gonna take this, that's a terrible idea.
When, when we, I was on the school building committee, the chairperson of the school building committee. They built this. And when we approved the plans and when we reviewed the parking, there was just enough parking for the school and events. They, the only reason, in fact, it wasn't enough parking, we had to add some spaces out back to get to the right number of parking for that size building with that school capacity. So I don't know how they can just arbitrarily say they don't need it when all the math that we did when we built the school says they do. In fact, they do.
It's a matter of safety for the students that are getting dropped off, is how Steve Mark explained it to me. The school department is requesting to not have those striped, those schools at the drop-off circle not have those striped, not allow parking there during school. He says people are driving up to the spaces and letting kids off while they're sitting in the spaces so the kids are crossing in front of the cars that are coming in just in the drop-off lane.
It's a conflict. Yeah, it's a problem.
Yeah, so it's a conflict.
So what's their mitigation? Because I drop off there twice a week.
Yeah.
I'm one of those people.
Yeah.
And, and so what's their mitigation for this whole problem they've created?
Remove the stripes that show the parking spaces.
How is that gonna, how is that gonna change?
People are still gonna park.
You can drop off.
It's not, nobody, nobody parks.
They do, Steve was explaining that over the course of time, they do park there.
Not, not, not at seven o'clock in the morning they don't? I do it almost, we, I mean, I come, we all come in here, it says a huge line that comes out here, goes all the way out down the street. You come in, you drive down these parking spaces, and then you drop and you leave.
But some people are stopping and parking.
I have never seen anybody do that.
I have. They park down the very end sometimes when they go in, but everyone does continue to pull down the white stripes. They pull over long enough, the kids get out, and then off they go again.
And they put a barrier up right there so that if you do have business in the school at that time, you're not supposed to go in there and park. So they block you out from that. So what, what are you supposed to do?
Yeah.
Would you like me to have Steve come in and explain what his request is?
Yeah.
You know, we have a member of the board who has firsthand experience and.
I mean, it's not, it's not.
I hate to discount the request of the school department.
Then, I'm gonna make that.
Let's have him come in and make a form. We can't deal with it in five minutes' time.
Here's the other problem. They line all their buses, let the buses behind you, and they line them all up right here.
What was your observation situation?
They walk over here and they cross here while the buses are pulling up.
What their issue is, is they don't want people to park. I mean, I think Jerry's right, they probably don't park in the morning. They have afternoon pickup as well if the cars are parked there. What they want is the cars to come up and deal with the kids out along the curb. And then when that person gets out, they can get out into the line and leave. There's a conflict with what the signs say now. They say, "No parking, drop-off only," and then this parking's blocked. So what they wanna do is change this, to get rid of the parking. And we discussed having no parking during school hours so you can still park there during an event at night and during football games and larger events. And they're gonna change the signs from this way to this way so you can see them as you drive up and say, "No parking." But as Jerry states, they block the entrance, so if you legitimately want to park, you can't. You have to go down through that line and in like the exit to go park.
And then they, the buses are dropping off and blowing out of there while the kids are in the crosswalk. And the guy who's, who's, I don't know what his name is, one of the guys that works for the school is standing right there next to the door drinking his coffee doing nothing. So, I mean, there's nobody managing this process as far as like, there's nobody with a sign, there's nobody with a thing on. So, I mean, if they're really serious about it, they would have, I don't know, whatever, like a traffic flow. Like they do, Russell Street has that. Russell Street has the ladies there, she makes sure that nobody cuts the buses off. You're not allowed to go in through the cone, so the kids never have that conflict, but they don't do that.
Yeah, why don't we have them come in? We can't decide this in three minutes' time. Never seen a kid.
We got nothing else to do.
That's a matter of management, not structural change.
All right. So we didn't take care of that, so we've done nothing so far. All right, since we're all here, we're allowed to go elections.
Called reorganization.
Sure.
I move that Mark Montanari be chair.
I move that Richie Crowley be chair.
Boy, we got two motions.
All right. All those in favor of.
Second on either of those?
Second on them.
All right, I'll second, I'll second Don's motion.
I'll second Peter's motion.
Okay, all those in favor of Mark Montanari be chair, signify by saying aye.
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 All those in favor of.
All those opposed.
All those opposed.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Don't you think it's time for a change? You want anybody different?
I think we're.
I like to, I like to, if you don't agree with Richie though, I'd like to see Jared.
As chair.
Yeah, I think you do a great job.
Yeah, but I don't have the time. I just walked off a plane.
Pardon?
I just walked off a plane. I'm gone two days every week.
Where'd you go?
D.C.
You should, you should spend more time inside the plane instead of outside.
Okay. Just spend three hours.
All right, so we need Clark vice chair.
Vice chair.
Vice chair.
I'll nominate Peter Scottian.
I'll second that nomination. All those in favor of Peter being vice chair, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
We need a clerk.
Peter, what's his emotion here? He should be jumping.
Well, I was vice chair last year. I thought you'd go up the ladder, not stay in the same place. I thought.
Yeah, Michael have to explain that math to you.
Oh, Clark, here we go.
So is that somebody who reads the things?
Yeah.
Jerry.
Bud.
You wanna read it? All right.
I'll read it.
Charles.
All those in favor of Jerry being clerk, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
He had one thing, did three things.
Okay, I didn't put name tags out and there's a new young man running the LCTV for us tonight, so we'll take a minute.
We should switch them back and forth and confuse them.
Okay. They don't remember who we are?
Thought I did.
Okay, we have a seven-on-five informal discussion at 529 King Street.
Hi.
There.
I think it was about twenty years ago that I was last here. And Mark, I think you were the chair at that time.
Uh, probably not twenty years ago.
I'd have to agree with that.
I don't think so.
Um, my name is Virginia Wood and I am the owner of the property at 529 King Street. And what we are proposing is to open an artist cooperative in half the building and in the other half of the building to do a restaurant. And I have with me today Gwen Vivian of Act Three Cafe, formerly of the Act and Jazz Cafe. And so she is, we are teaming up to try and turn that beautiful historic property right in the middle of the center of your town into a really nice viable, cool artist spot with live music and artists. And I've brought with me this evening as well some of the artists that have, have agreed to help out on this project. Just started thinking about it about a month ago and Maren, in her incredible wisdom, even though I wasn't sure where I was going, scheduled me for this meeting. So thank you for doing that.
Just for the audiences listening, could we identify that this is the old Ken's Cafe?
It was originally, well, it's been all kinds of cafes along the line. But yes, I owned it as Ken's American Cafe. And then I leased it out to Tramici and they closed about a year ago, a little bit less than a year ago.
So it sounds very exciting.
It's really cool. It's really cool, Don. We've got, we've got about forty artists that have started up so far. I don't know if you've seen the plan, but if you know the building, what we're planning to do is out in the old front antique part of the building to have classroom space out there for children and adults to take art classes. There will also be artist space out there, so the artists are gonna rent the space. And then we've got Act Three Cafe, which will be taking over what we refer to as the sunroom, which is the room that's got all the big glass windows in it, and the kitchen and the bar area. And then the artists are gonna be taking over the room that has all the booths in it. And so we're gonna hopefully get rid of those booths soon. And they will have each of their spaces along the way. So it's been really, I've just been overwhelmed with the amount of interest and enthusiasm to date. I mean, forty artists already are, you know, out there interested in getting space. Have you got the contracts yet? Are we there yet? It's like, I'm not even there yet, but.
And Act Three will use the buyer portion.
Exactly, exactly. And Gwen plans to have live music pretty much every night. So it just, it's gonna be a really cool, cool spot.
What about parking?
What about parking?
Are you gonna increase the amount of parking that you need?
Uh, I don't think we need to. And Maren had looked into that. I think based on the numbers that I sent through that we have enough parking. But we always have Roger Canard as the backup plan if need be.
That was part of the regular plan. In order for it to open in the first place, you have to have that, so you don't have that.
It's gonna be fewer seats. We're only gonna have fifty or so, fifty to sixty seats.
Well, for, for the Act Three.
For Act Three. And then if you take the artist space and you do that on a retail basis, which I think is one car for every hundred and fifty square feet, then I think you should have the numbers in front of you. And I apologize if I didn't bring them, but I think I've got enough parking. Mark, as I said, Maren was gonna look into that and let me know if I needed more, but I didn't hear back from her, so I kind of assumed that it was okay.
What's the capacity from the other seating for the, I mean, how many people do you think might have in there?
Well, it's, we're still working on the numbers, but I think that Gwen is planning on fifty to sixty seats for the restaurant. And then for retail space, artist retail space, the artists aren't gonna be in front of their booths all day. We'll have one person, maybe two overseeing the retail aspect of it. Two store clerks, basically. So then it's just whomever wanders in off the street.
It's sort of a matter of accounting and, you know, knowing parking, but then who knows more help if you know that isn't here. But who knows what they do, you know, for accounting.
Yeah.
So what?
So anyway, there was some information on the parking table on the little plan. And then she did an analysis of the areas that she's gonna use. And she comes up with a smaller number of parking, you know, required.
There are three lots of stuff.
So according to zoning, she'll have enough parking. Question becomes if it's very active there, where would overflow parking go?
That parking includes the parking on the back.
No.
It includes. The original plan did.
Thirty-nine spaces there?
Yeah, so there's those. And then they took down the building that was right here, so I've got parking here now. And I've got parking here.
Isn't this Rogers' or this is yours?
That one.
Oh, that's yours. Okay, so Rogers' is right at the back.
Yeah.
Okay, I got to know.
That's a good question about overflow parking. I don't know if that could happen.
I need to talk to Roger. Yeah, wouldn't that be great if that happened? I would be ecstatic if that would happen. And I'm sure with Gwen's incredible ability at drawing a good crowd in, music crowd, that.
So this would be Act Three of Jazz Cafe?
Exactly.
That's why we're calling it Act Three.
Right. It'd be nice to have something local here.
So as long as she's meeting the parking, she doesn't really need it?
Well, she's meeting the parking. She needs access through the.
Yeah, and that's Roger. I gotta talk to Roger.
So she does need an easement to Roger's driveway.
Egress?
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, the fire department.
Access into where though? Go backward streets, I call it, to Roger's.
It's private road.
Private driveway.
Where does it spill out?
One ten.
Oh, back on.
Yeah, on the other side of the restaurant.
What else is she needing from us though, really?
I just finished the site plan review. I did take the liberty to fill out the checklist. Or most of the checklist.
Where is that, Maren?
But there is no change of use, correct?
I would, I would say that there's no change of use.
Yeah, actually, there is a partial change of use.
With the retail?
With adding the retail.
But when I rent Ken's American Cafe, we had retail.
Right, but the way to, but that's the way you get them to look at the parking space to see if you need to.
Right.
So you want them to go.
To a firm.
But did I read also it's somewhere on a nonprofit? Wasn't that in there somewhere?
Yes, because we're gonna be doing the classes. We are applying as a nonprofit organization, very similar to the way the Sharon Art Center in New Hampshire works.
The issue with a nonprofit is similar to a school, isn't it? A nonprofit doesn't pay property tax?
No, 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 because Bender Woods is a for-profit company and that's who owns the property.
You tell you what, Bender leasing the space as a person who owns, don't let them down.
Yeah.
So there's not a conflict of that.
No, 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 because I'm Bender Woods. I own the property and I'm leasing to Gallery 529, which is gonna do the artist cooperative and to Act Three, which will be Gwen Vivian and.
To be for profit.
Yes.
But the nonprofit moves people in, makes it more viable.
Once again, your thing stays on the tax roll, correct?
It's on the tax roll. You will be getting every tax dollar you deserve.
All right, so everybody missed by the final one.
Say they deserve.
Billy Harland inspected the fire alarm system and talked to Keith, and I have talked to Keith, and there are some issues. Keith wants the boulders due to Rogers removed. And I guess the system has changed in the last five years, so I have to get a different panel and.
All right, so why don't we continue this till the tenth? But I don't say anything to hold it up. I mean.
Now, what do we need to do to get this thing moving tonight, or can we do anything?
Need to look through the rest of the site plan review checklist before she, the building inspector has indicated that he would probably require a building permit. And so fire department would be drawn into the process at that point.
This is just informal, so you really.
Building permit for separating the buildings?
For the renovations.
Yeah, we're painting and we're removing the booths, and so for that we need to get a building permit.
Egress.
And they'll be doing new lighting fixtures, so they will need an electrical permit. So that draws, tends to draw the building inspector into the process at that point as well.
The last tenant took all the lighting fixtures off.
So we need, we need to approve site modification?
Yeah.
So why don't we just do it on the tenth? Have everything, we'll get, we'll get everybody's input by then.
Got enough time for you?
Yeah, for you.
What, too much time?
That would be, thank you.
That shouldn't be a problem.
Enough time or too much time?
Plenty of space.
I'm gonna be away for next week, so it works out wonderful.
Where you going?
Uh, it's my backyard.
Okay, so we'll. This is exciting.
We'll continue.
We had a vacation in like ten years, so I just wanna live vicariously for months. I'd love to know where summer's going.
Do you need, do you need us to poll the members to see how we feel?
I'm getting very good feelings from everybody. Thank you.
First of all, it's a good change, you know.
It's an informal discussion anyway.
Next day it's.
Anyway, all right, so we'll get you on. What time you think, Barn?
I'll put it on near the beginning of the agenda. You haven't decided what time you're starting yet.
Can you, can you use seven or no in the summer?
July tenth is the next meeting?
I think I broke like two traffic laws getting here.
Well, we'll do board business first before you get in.
Do that every morning just going to the.
Why don't we start at seven, but we'll put around for seven thirty? Seven fifteen?
Seven fifteen, yeah.
Seven fifteen.
We can do that.
Okay.
And how do we, with Act Three, do I, what do we need to do for that? Is that part of the same site plan?
What about our liquor license and all the other stuff?
That's the town.
We're just the outside.
Have you seen the board of health just to get a feeling or called Jim Griffey?
No, I haven't. I will do that, Don. Thank you.
Okay, it throws the barrier in or something.
All right.
All right, thank you. We'll see you then. Good luck, by the way. We have seven fifteen, continue public hearing, water resource special permit for Adam Street, updating for the towing. This one. Is that it? That's all right. Okay, since we met, we would have paved the area to park the damaged cars and some sort of drainage to try to keep the overflow off the neighbors in the back. So this is, um, this is the plan that you brought before us. I sort of hope that you could put them closer to the building, but I understand that you can only get them out in that area in the back.
According to John and Mike, you did the plan. He tried to put it where you wanted it. The problem was that there already existed too much storage bins there where they still haul the compots for the people to, that they use in the garage, you know, to fix the caps. And in addition, when he tried to draw the plan, there was a swale that was gonna go in, gonna run to the catch basin and the filtration system. And what happened there was that the trucks in fact would be driving over that constantly. And he said that in a very short time, it would cause that to fail. So he came up with the alternative, what you see now, which is a forty-by-ninety that drains and slopes directly into the catch basin with the filtration system and the lip on the back of the parking area and the paved area and a lip, and a lip on the left-hand side so that the water is contained and the water quality is preserved.
And is infiltration tend to be in the concrete?
Yes.
There's some hardtop leading to it, you know, he'd bring it in on his cross格.
That's a low, that's a low spot in a lot of.
The whole lot is level. They got foot from one end to the other. So if they bring it in, put it on the pavement, it's his only.
It's all going in the same place.
He doesn't have any other real choice to.
I think it's the best we can offer for that difficult situation.
This has got a lot of surprises and hardtop leading to it, that's going to.
It's also an operation made this panel that he, that he drew up that I would ask to be made probably be an approval.
That looks pretty good, actually. How do you, how do you monitor that?
Well, who do you say reports it is the real question?
That goes on with monitoring it.
It's probably the water department that asked to.
Did you see that in their recommendation?
It's the aquifer, but it's up the upper ends where it really isn't, like the end of it, isn't it?
I did take the liberty of drafting a decision and one of the conditions was that they comply with the O and M manual, which requires, I think it was annual recording.
It's more than that, sometimes quarterly. First year, there's much more. Occasionally four times a year.
What I consider is that whoever is installed with it would be the person that would have to go in and check it and report to who you choose to have it report to, either annually or semi-annually.
But it does talk about maintenance procedure, especially the oil absorbent pillow. Replace something two months. Talks about maintenance procedure two times per year. And the amount of sediment, trash exceeds what half the solid volume.
Once again, who's going to view this?
They set inspection procedure four times a year. Yeah, and the water department, I would think that would be the.
We don't even have monitoring wells in this, so.
No, but this is what's in the O and M manual.
Right, so we'll just make it so.
Whatever the conditions are, that's freedom of.
We'll make it so that the water department can come in and check on the place. Since there's no monitoring wells, it's them come in. So let me just.
So you keep records on site of doing this, I assume?
Yes, you will.
No O and M serves suggestions, it isn't, yeah.
No hazardous, no congestion.
Don, if you make the O and M manual part of the decision, reference it in the decision, then it becomes a zoning requirement.
So you can only keep twenty vehicles, no sodium.
Whose jurisdiction is it?
Really, it's ours.
Your jurisdiction enforced by the zoning enforcement officer, Roland. Enforcing it.
Okay.
Is it a requirement to meet that O and M standard?
It's up to you, if you want to add.
If we add it, it's part of our decision.
Right.
The base, basic decision does not include a requirement for an O and M manual. We can, it can be added in.
I would recommend that you do that.
Yeah, we do have something there.
I mean, where things fail is when they're not done and they're not inspected.
Why don't we put the manual in and we'll approve the water, the special permit and the site plan? It's the best we can do on a tight, difficult situation. There is a limit to it of twenty vehicles. And we'll just, you know, go from there. And it is on page, that's the best we could ask for. Why don't we do site plan first? Board have any problems with the site plan as it's presented?
Well, the only concern I had is there's gravel in between the pad and the street. We have ideas to have, but hardtop and rain, I'm surprised there isn't a pathway for the towman to take the car in.
So that concern's noted, right? Is there any other, do we need to address that concern, or can we move on?
Well, does the board have any concerns that it's, there's a break from the vehicles, pavement, gravel pavement?
No, I don't.
I don't, I don't either.
Pete, do you have an issue with that?
That's, okay, good.
One question for Jake. You're not going to be using the unpaved area to park cars, right?
Always have, and they're coming to park all wrecked cars there, if that's what they want.
No, they're unpaved.
They're unpaved.
It's been on the basis, I don't know.
I thought we were only going to have damaged cars in the chair.
I was thought that it was supposed to be for the DWI cars. That's what I was told, because there's change of use. So they can have twenty DWI cars back on that page.
You can't have any cars that aren't on pavement theoretically. They all have to be on pavement.
None of this grandfathering, you can't.
On grandfather.
It's not.
I look at right now, the president, what?
Time out, it's not grandfathered.
All right, what he came here for is to get it, to be able to tow. Correct. Wants to have the vehicles that we requested that he towed put on pavement. Is what we requested of him, right?
Well, but that doesn't make sense to have the... And it's in, it's in your, he's in front of you now. And you have the recommendation from the water department that the damaged vehicles be towed, be stored on pavement.
Yeah, correct.
Right.
It didn't say all cars on pavement, it says.
Our bylaw says all cars are supposed to be on pavement. Our bylaw, it's in right in our bylaw.
Where does it say that?
If you, it doesn't say it, it's how you've always.
We do not allow cars to be parked, not on.
So much, we told him.
I, no, I'm just, all I'm saying is, what he's here before us right now is, excuse me, the cars that are coming off that are damaged have to be put on the pavement. The question was asked about whether or not you should pave it to get the cars onto the pavement. That, that's the only issue.
Why, because of spillage in the thirty feet it takes to get from the gate to the pavement? Wow.
Okay.
What about all the spillage on the road on the way in?
Yes, at least on the road.
It's on a tired road.
And that's better?
Yes, goes to catch basin.
And then straight to the aquifer. Goes to the aquifer.
Well, no.
No.
The idea is when fluids fall on the pavement, there's some time for some evaporation and.
And some cleaning, yeah.
You know.
And what evaporates from liquids? Water, liquids.
All type of organic compounds.
I mean, you know.
The issue is, the twenty cars that are going to be damaged, are we happy with putting them on the pavement and leave the, leave it the way it was the rest?
Happy? You're happy with that?
He's happy with that, I'm happy there, are you happy with that?
That's what you came here for, that's all. Otherwise, we should have told them to pave the whole thing in the first meeting and call it a day. Okay.
Well, it was discussed and it was thought the whole thing.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve the site plan subject to the way it was presented. So there's a paved area for the damaged cars, no more than twenty, no sodium deicing. His manual, his best management practices will be exercised there. The water department will have the opportunity to come take a look at it, make sure there's nothing leaching into the ground. Do that for the site plan and for the special permit. If it, if it becomes an issue, then maybe we will require monitoring wells at future date if the water department so deems it necessary. I'll entertain a motion to approve the, the site plan and special permit as per the plan that was presented to us.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Seconded by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. First day, you haul a vehicle in other than the way it comes in and it's leaking fluid steadily.
It'll be on a ramp truck.
You do take precautions to make sure it doesn't drip all over the non-paved areas, don't you?
It'll be on a ramp truck.
That's what you do regardless, isn't it?
Yes. Oh, absolutely.
I have a.
And they'll continue to do that in the future.
I have a hesitation, but no one will have a hesitation.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a. Seven thirty.
You'd have made a great chair.
Seven thirty.
Foxy chair.
Chestnut Lane. An update on Chestnut Lane.
My name's Dan Corrigan, I'm D K Engineering. That was before your last meeting. Martin, Mary and I have been going back and forth with some. Some agreement that would be signed by the board and the applicant as to what would be done as far as the planting of the seed and the mitigation of any increase in runoff.
So it's the same one I sent.
Okay.
You know, conservation mix, put away.
But that's the discussion that we put together today.
I saw ten emails of it.
Yeah, the, in order to mitigate the runoff, I used a hay mix, which reduces the CN value to seventy-one. If it's just a grass mix, it's seventy-four, because the hay is denser and it'll retain the runoff. So what we were proposing is a hay mix to be used. And I sent back, I think my last email was a mix that was referred to me by North Environmental, Steve Erickson at North Environmental. He said it's common mix in Massachusetts for hay. And I mentioned to Mary, if that's a concern, I'll be glad to go see the NRCS and come up with something that they recommend.
You just want to seed it.
Yeah.
And you're not going to know it, so it's going to go back to force anyways.
I think it's going to be better than what it is. I don't have a problem with this, though, where we are with the other lot. I know you're not handling that, but.
I don't have anything to do with it.
Right, we haven't heard back from Mr. Gass, the owner of Lot Eleven.
Okay.
So we'll ask.
But Roland's not going to issue, we're not going to see or anything else until that. We, that issue's addressed, correct?
Right, which is, two letters had gone out to the owners of Lot Four and Five. I'll ask Roland to send a letter, second letter to Lot Eleven.
How soon are you going to do this?
They want to do it, they want to do it right away. They don't want to, but they wanted to make sure that everything was okay. They didn't want to go out there and do it and then find out there are more issues.
Anybody, so what do we stand with Roland as far as their violation?
Well, you're making a recommendation to Roland on how to deal with that violation. The recommendation, the draft recommendation is to ask him to seed it.
Which would end the violation period?
Yeah.
From the time we make the decision.
Oh, no, that's still a violation because the seed.
No, 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 in other words, he's been in violation since he clear cut the lot, which means you charge him about three hundred a day?
I don't think so.
A violation.
If he, if Roland decides to go forward with trying to collect a, to issue a fine.
Are you just scratching your head and you have your hand up now?
All right, for, for the people in the audience and the TV, this is Chestnut Farm Road.
Off of Harvard Road.
Off of Harvard Road, where the owner clear cut about, how many acres? About ten acres.
On this, on Lot Four and Five, it was about eleven acres.
Eleven acres, yeah, clear cut, that violated, that broke DEP rules.
No, that was, that's not true, the.
By the open space.
It's not an open space plan. The violation was he changed the drainage patterns in violation of the shared driveway special permit. And so now he's proposing to seed with the hay mix to mitigate that.
So it was our special permit that was broken?
Right.
What he mentioned in the, in the letter was condition number four, which basically says if you're changing the drainage, you have to do something mitigated on site with LED methods. And that's what we're trying to do. And in the, from what I, I wasn't involved with it from the start, but what I was told that as soon as I got the letter, they went out and put erosion control in. And then they contacted us and asked for us to do something to mitigate it.
Very good, and that's why we're here tonight.
Do you have any questions?
Nope.
Yeah, still, I think private conservation mix might be best. That is for erosion control.
It's not necessarily for erosion control, there isn't much going on out there as far as erosion. The hay, again, to mitigate the runoff, we have to use the hay mix.
Right.
Otherwise, you're still going to have an increase in runoff, and we haven't solved anything.
I mean, in five years, if it's left.
I'm good with this, I'm sure. James, quickly.
I think they're in front of the conservation commission as well. So hopefully what you decide is consult with conservation.
Should we wait for conservation to make it into?
I don't think so.
I would recommend we, this is conservation, obviously the same site, conservation may or may not have jurisdiction, depending on if the clearing was within a hundred feet of the wetlands or is clearly impacting any wetlands.
This is our special permit.
This is our special.
I said, I put the hay mix in, let it go.
To.
Yes, I'll take a motion to approve the agreement in principle that was presented to us with the seeding everything, not to touch the stumps, leave it as it is, and put the conservation grass mix over it.
No, 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 not the conservation.
Well, that's what it says in here.
No, that was suggested actually by the Escape Architects.
What are we putting in there?
I think hay mix.
Yes.
Hay mix.
Putting in the.
Conservation commission has nothing to do with this anyways, do they? No, I went in front, I went in front of conservation, they asked me to show up and discuss it with them. As a courtesy. Right. And what I came up with from the information I had was there was no work within a hundred fifty feet of the wetlands. They wanted to go out on a site walk to verify that, and we're waiting for them to schedule it. To.
All right, are you enjoying this?
Yes.
All those in favor of the? The.
Hay seed mix?
The, yeah, shared driveway special permit alteration remediation plan, signify by saying aye.
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 Something's failing out.
Yeah, hay.
Good, next.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right. Seven forty-five.
Two forty-seven.
Farm Wellness Center.
Great Road Wellness Center.
Who's that?
Poor Farm Wellness Center. Great Road Poor Farm Wellness Center.
Used to be a jail in the basement of that place. You know that?
This is the house on the corner that.
It's on the one.
Old road.
Yeah, old, old Great Road.
Mm-hmm, yeah, Bruce, GPR will be here.
They are here.
Bruce is here, just walked.
The walk through.
We're a couple of minutes early, I guess.
Yeah, go ahead. This is it?
It's a big plant, so here it is.
Oh, absolutely.
That's it.
Old Great Road, yeah, that's the house.
Yeah.
Well, I beg your plea.
No, it's all right.
You can have it if you want.
I think you've got to be the one, I didn't.
We each did.
Okay, but I don't have it.
Yeah, you have.
No, I have it, thank you.
We only need one.
All right, where is he?
I know. I say he loses his spot and he goes to the end.
That's right.
Sort of like a home industry.
You should have been chairman. We're making great decisions tonight.
It's because he's thinking with his stomach, that's why.
Yeah, I mean.
I know, we have to wait.
He is.
What else we got, Martin?
We're ahead, we're ahead.
But we're going to be ahead because lectures aren't coming.
What do you mean?
They're not coming. You got any more bills to pay or?
Let's see, I'm sending the bills around. There's one review bill and then one reimbursement for my cell phone data plan for one month and some postage that I paid.
Hey, that's him.
Had drafted, it's from April 28th and May 8th.
How you doing? Say, shouldn't we have our internet stuff paid for by the town, see how we get internet?
Don't break, we'll let them jump right in.
Because we get money from the cell towers?
Yeah, shouldn't, shouldn't they pay for our communication things?
Conservation and everybody else.
What do you think?
Want it to add it to next year's budget? We can request that.
Yeah, make the cell phone towers pay for our cell phones and our. You mean private cellphone use? Well, you know, if we get your emails through your private phone, then who's to distinguish one from the next? It's totally joking, in case anybody was wondering, I was joking. Just to let you know. I was going to say, I mean, now we'd make a public official job, like. Like the rest of the country and the state, you know, legislature, senate. Wow. Something for nothing.
That's commentary right there.
Huh?
Comment to senate?
You know, I would like to do that, because it'd be kind of interesting.
I said, we created a monster.
Well, really, sixty-six percent now.
See, if you, if you were like on the ball every meeting, we could actually shorten this whole thing down to an hour.
Okay, we're going to do fast food bit planning board from now on.
Look, this isn't rocket science.
No drive-throughs, this is fast food.
We have, we have an opportunity to review and approve the minutes here. You want to move to?
Yeah, sure.
I don't have anything of, uh-
I think most people email them back, you know.
Yeah, they look fine.
Do you have any numbers?
Okay, Bruce, I got-
Do you wanna move on the minutes?
Oh.
Wait, do the minutes.
I moved, moved except both sets of minutes.
Both sets of minutes after.
What dates? When you say both sets?
You moved to accept the minutes as is?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
These are the minutes from May eighth and the minutes from April twenty-eighth.
Right.
Good job, give those to Eric. You stamp them?
Hey, I haven't signed those.
Oh, you know them?
Yeah.
All right, you know them?
I know you're in a rush, bud.
I'm on the rush.
Okay, go ahead, Bruce, you're up now.
All right, good evening, Bruce Ringwallen from GPR, representing, um, Gia Gangden, uh, and this is Gia Gangden. She's proposing, she's in a purchase and sales agreement right now to buy five forty-seven, um, Great Road. And you guys are all well aware of the site, that's the White Farm House on the corner, but that and Beaver Brook, which is unique in that it has the old Great Road, road access and, uh, dead ends right at the property. The property right now, as you know, has been used for both residential and commercial over the years. We wish to continue along that line and that we wanna have a residence within the building, um, but we're gonna be setting it up as a, uh, office use for a wellness facility. And to that extent, uh, there needs to be some things modified to the site, so we're looking at, if there is a living unit there, two parking spaces for the living unit. We're looking at, um, roughly three employees and two, um, spaces per, basically employees, four more, and roughly five clients or so at the property at the same time. So that would be eleven spaces, we've come up with ten spaces on site. That's gonna be when the business is up and running and at full steam, that we would need that kind of parking spaces. Uh, it's, you know, being a new business will take off slow, so it won't necessarily be that. We have three in front of the, uh, the existing barn portion of the building, um, the area that's stone or gravel in front right here, right now, we're looking to pave. And add four spaces there, one being the handicap, and three spaces down near, um, the front of the site. We've kind of broken it up in this air manner for a number of reasons, the septic tanks are located right off of the, the pavement, uh, up in the upper portion. So we've provided a turnaround up here, so the vehicles have adequate space to turn around there. And we've provided a turnaround by adding about five foot strip of pavement to the opposite side of these spaces, so that they have space to back up and turn around there. As well, the three down by the road, we've noticed we've pushed them out, uh, ten feet beyond what's necessary for the parking spaces, so that they can back up and turn around within the driveway area. The driveway's recently been repaved, so we didn't wanna try to mess with that anymore than we needed to, and we wanted to set it up so that this pavement could easily blend in with, um, that which has recently been paved. Increased impervious area because of this paving is about twenty-one hundred square feet, so we're gonna take the current impervious on the site of like four point two, uh, four point eight to six point two percent, well underneath the fifteen percent. So hence, we're not in, uh, requesting a special permit, even though we are within the aqua protection district. We've got a proposal of putting in a stone filter edge, uh, right along the edge of the pavement, and the site kind of pitches in this general direction from the north to the south. And that stone filter edge will pick up the first flush of water coming off, and then the water will do an overland flow, and we're putting in a, um, one foot high berm down here, and with a spillway. And this spillway here will allow for holding any increased impervious area down into there and allow for infiltration into the ground, and in a heavy storm, there may be a little bit that would spill over here. We're got more recharge and more storage than is required under the regulations, as is in our nice little package of information we gave you. The nice thing with this, the LIDs that we're using on here, is there's no maintenance, anything more than mowing, maintaining that the berm doesn't get knocked down. Pretty straightforward, nice and simple, um, we proposed a couple of lights, uh, lantern style lights. We've talked with, uh, the light and water department, and I don't have it on there, but I have it called out on here. Um, it's a, uh, a lantern looking lamp, I think there's a, a detail of it in the package that we submitted you.
Is there, um, monitoring wells now?
No monitoring wells on the site now, um, there's a whole lot of monitoring wells in this whole complex, and more so as you get over closer to, um, well number two. Um, but there's no monitoring wells on this property that I know of, we didn't find any when we did the survey, and I didn't double check.
What's right next to him, is that the old Curtis Strauss right next to him?
Two.
Two over, the monitoring over there.
They have monitoring wells in the back, on the back parcel back there, um, and then there's monitoring wells, I believe at five thirty-seven and the one in the back, which I can't remember.
What's a wellness center?
Wellness center, um, wellness center deals with, um, different types of, uh, treatment, trust, and in this particular case, it's a brain-
Brain state is one of the main diseases.
Brain state technology, which is a non-invasive, non-medical, non, non-medical, is that the right word? Non-medical?
Yeah.
Non-medical, uh, treatment.
Or relaxation techniques.
Is this like tarot cards or something like that, is that what you mean? Cause it's non-medical, it's non-invasive?
It's self-reversive.
You see tar, tarot cards?
Uh, US medical, uh, you, uh, you ask medical to have a wellness center.
No, and that is why I'm asking the question, is, is not likely to be an issue with overfull parking, it's not like it's gonna be, it will never be a business that takes off, has a, like, an event that would require extra parking space.
That's correct, there is a possibility, somewhere down the road, that there may be a group therapy type thing that may occur, um, and if that's the case, as we proposed in the documentation, we'd like to make use of some parking along the sides of old Great Road if we have a need for that. Cause it's a, it is a dead end, it's like twenty-four feet wide of pavement, and it's basically a driveway to this property.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May I speak?
Absolutely.
That's still a state road.
It is within the state road layout, that's correct.
So-
You can't really park there.
Nobody goes down there, I know, and I don't even know if the state plows it. But-
I think it's a banner, cause it's a banner on the other side as well.
Do you plow it?
No.
So-
Do you plow it?
Told you.
Even the other side that goes like to the farm and everything, you still plow that?
Do you have a, a question too, do you have, um, any, any kind of medical waste of any sort?
Just the stuff they take out of their heads and sends down to that wellness condition.
Basically, they put, you put, um, electrode on your head and, and listen with head earbuds, and that's-
My favorite one, I think.
That's great.
You're in a role there.
You're not gonna create any waste.
Gotta have some fun.
No waste.
You have enough parking, you have enough space in the-
For the waste, we're gonna use codes within the garage.
If you have any additional parking-
Paperless.
You can, yeah, you can, um, create it on site, you have plenty of space.
Yes, we have space to create additional parking on site, and we're well below the fifteen percent.
I see no problem.
The board, how, did the water department weigh in, did they?
Um, water department did weigh in, he asked about, um, the maintenance for the LID, and Bruce explained that there wasn't any really required. And since it's going from residential to more commercial, they'll have to comply with the, um-
Backflow.
Backflow, perhaps put a backflow preventer in.
It's pretty innocuous what you're doing out there, it's good to finally have something, something out there.
She could run a dispensary there.
The septic is, looks like it's, uh, the numbers look like they were-
Yeah, the septic, as you can see from what happens on the plan-
And she's gotta come back.
It's for seven, seventy gallons a day, I believe, seven twenty-two gallons a day, the way it's designed, and I think we're like at three hundred and twenty, the way we're looking at it right now, so we're well below the septic capacity of the actual leaching system.
What's the age of the system?
I don't recall right off the top of my head, and I think I-
It's gotta pass Title V regardless.
Yeah, it just passed Title V, it just had Title V.
You're gonna get rid of the trailer in the back?
The seller's gonna remove the trailer in the back.
Anybody have any other questions, landscaping, it's, it's kind of a-
The landscaping that's there meets the requirements of the zoning and the setbacks, um-
You will upkeep the, uh, the marker in the front? I'm just playing again.
Okay.
All right, come on.
I'll extend a motion to approve the, uh-
I second that motion.
I haven't even said what it is yet. God. They're only doing a site plan, right?
Right.
No, that's a special permit, all right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it seems, we wish you luck, by the way. Welcome to Littleton, and it'd be nice to see something in that house finally, is the cell gonna go, are you gonna use that for your difficult patients?
There's a cell in the basement, it used to be used, yeah.
Anyway, all right, I want to say a motion to approve the site plan.
I know, it's a good fear to have, right?
We've had a million people come before us to try to do something, it, it's nice to see something finally going there. All right, all those in favor of the site, the site plan as presented, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, aye.
Thank you. All fifteen minutes out of the, right?
That's right.
We're charging by, we're charging by the pound now.
Way over.
Way over, we should have taken less time. What, are you gonna critique after every meeting now? All right, we have an eight o'clock, which, uh, we're a little early for, so you wanna tap dance, Jerry, while we're early?
No.
Oh, we have an eight o'clock, we can't do anything.
Anyone wanna step up? Anyone wanna go early? Any more business?
It's a public hearing.
It's under board business, I had signature authorizations for AP and payroll, um-
Oh, this is, uh, this is serious.
A move that we all signed, as we just have.
Oh, yeah. We take no action on that.
Right.
It said everybody should-
But by default, we're already doing it.
What about, um, the bond release, did we, are we done with that?
Um-
The re-lane, the re-lane bond release.
Oh, can you get that information?
Chestnut?
No, re-lane, they're not asking that. Thank you for asking me to speak, that was very nice of you.
I just figured if you wanted to show your, like, driving the bus a little more.
All right, I agree.
Um, we have, uh, the as-built plan for re-lane.
Okay.
And we had a draft last fall, and it needed to, water lines to two of the units had to be added. One of the structures that we paved over, the structure since it's been raised, and now shown on the as-built plan, and the water lines were added to the as-built plan, um, water, so-
What, what structure was paved over?
Um, the manhole.
Oh, okay, that's right, I think I recall that.
So it's leaving us twelve grand to finish?
No, I'm sorry, the bond release I gave you was the last time you did it, um, now that we have the as-built and the, um, construction is complete, he's requesting release of the rest of the bond.
The twelve grand, that's left.
Sorry.
Not anything left to do, or should we wait until?
Are you satisfied with all the, everything he's done down there with the road and exposing the, uh, the manhole cover and da-da-da-da?
Oh, this is a pri, this is gonna remain a private road, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't know if he's all set.
I'll extend a motion to, to, to close out the bond, give him back the eleven thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and ten cents. All those in favor, if you're saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
And then if you would accept the as-built.
Yeah. Don't move. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, yeah, I can't really do you. Okay, we're getting closer.
Do they have any more lots, or, or all the houses sold in that development?
Um, all the houses in the rear are finished, remember, you had two more lots on the front with duplexes on each.
Oh, yeah, they're built.
The first duplexes there is under construction, they started the second together.
Looks good.
Does look good. Very good, glad to see something getting done.
Finished, yes.
Might give a little letter about the common?
About the common?
Common? Proving our town common.
Which one are we on now?
When's that road, or?
Two B three.
Cobb Meadows, I mean, we met, um-
Which has two.
Sanderson.
What happened to that two B three?
Um, I'm sorry, got moved down to nine five.
Two B two?
Anything you wanna, wonderful.
Where are we at now, here?
Yep.
Where are we at, eight o'clock? What's that about?
Bring on the clown, the jokers and the fools, I had a time of my life, and my time in company of fools. Zip it, B. Ta-da.
I'm ready.
All right, what? Oh, no, he, that was informal, this is, this is formal now, he's gotta have the leads and bounds of the drainage, he's gotta have it all done now. That was just, that was just play, he had his fingers crossed for that.
Is it?
No.
All right, Paul Alpin, you, you can begin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, those of the Green House, proof of family, notice of butters, my name is Paul Alpin, I represent the trustees of the Oak Hill Trust, and David Sanderson, and Woodcombe and Jeff Pram, of Mindset Run Corporation.
Actually, we should probably read it.
Yeah.
Right, right.
I forgot, this is our first-
Public hearing.
First public hearing, so-
It's like we're here so much.
Yes, and I, you know, I totally forgot that we haven't actually done the reading of it.
Do you have one?
Yes, we do.
I have to read that, right?
Yes, you do. Don't be nervous, it's your first one.
Scary.
Ready, go.
Okay, it's public hearing, definitive subdivision, open space, development, shared residential, driveway special permits, and scenic road review, known as Bennett Orchard. The Towne Littleton Planning Board will hold consolidated public hearings on Thursday, June twelfth, two thousand fourteen, at eight PM, in room one oh three of Town Hall at thirty-seventh Shattuck Street, to consider the application for approval of a definitive subdivision plan, and a special permit for an open space development, a shared residential driveway, and a joint hearing with the tree warden for a scenic road review for the proposed Bennett Orchard subdivision. The consolidated public hearing will be held pursuant to MGL C four one, section eight one K, eight eleven GG, subdivision control law, MGL C forty A, section nine, zoning act special permits, MGL C forty, section fifteen C, scenic roads, and MGL C eighty-seven, section three, public shade trees, and pursuant to sections one seventy-three through ninety-three, through one seventy-three through one eighteen, open space development, selections one seventy-three through one twenty-five, through one seventy-three through one twenty-seven, shared residential driveways, and chapter one forty-three, scenic roads of the Littleton zoning bylaw. The project site for each application is identical and is located at Sanderson Road, Oak Hill Road, and Woodcombe Avenue, also known as the Sanderson property. The project site is shown on assessor's map, R twelve as parcels thirty and thirty-three. The definitive subdivision plan shows thirty-two lots and two open space parcels for a total of twenty-two point six acres of open space and one thousand seven hundred and ninety-four feet of new public roadway, and a shared residential driveway, three hundred and twenty-three feet in length. Property owners and applicant, applicants, Martha S. Anderson, Edward O. Sanderson, George J. Sanderson, co-trustees of the Oak Hill Road Trust, and David Sanderson, CEO of their attorney, in fact, Paul F. Alpin Esquire. Applications and plans can be viewed at the planning board and the town clerk's office during the business hours, any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed application and plan should appear at the time and place designated Cheryl Portante, clerk.
They're also representatives of the Sanderson family here behind Jeff, which is important, the property's been in the Sanderson family since the seventeen hundreds, um, and, uh, and the consequence, it's located on Sanderson Road, Oak, Oak Hill Road, and Woodcombe Avenue, and I'll just briefly explain why we have five applications before the board. You recall that in December, the preliminary subdivision plan, uh, was approved, and we went forward and put together the definitive plan with an open space, uh, with an open space plan, and the open space, uh, as stated in the, uh, public hearing notice, contains twenty-two point six acres, which is over fifty percent, it's fifty point two percent of the total area of forty-five point one five acres. So a significant portion of the property is being protected by open space, and as a result of that, we are submitting an open space development special permit application. We submitted all of the lots in the subdivision within the contact, context of the open space, uh, subdivision special permit application, even though the lots on, um, the, the lots on Oak Hill Road could qualify as AR lots. And that's one of the things we talked about during the preliminary plan stages, this gives the planning board the ability to impose conditions, you know, regarding no-cut zones or some other things, it allows you to take a look at the project in its totality, and so we didn't carve these off and, and put them on an AR plan, we put them on the definitive plan, put them on the open space plan, so you can, you can act on this together as one plan, and, and, you know, we can together move things around if necessary, um, as a, as a, as a total plan. The other thing that we did in the, on the application, is the lots thirty-one, thirty, and twenty-nine in this area have been set aside with its own designated open space. The first parcel of open space, the larger parcel of open space is gonna be tied to the lots on Edward Drive, and open space parcel B- And open space parcel B, which is 3.4 acres, would be tied to the ownership of these three lots. And we did that specifically because during the preliminary plan stages, there were discussions about the potential that the land in here could be either purchased by a nonprofit, uh, by an interested party, or by the town. Because the property is all under Chapter 61A, that, if the project is approved, if our client chooses to exercise the plans and chooses to put it on the market, the town would have a right of refusal to purchase the property. So we set it up this way so that if the property is purchased by the town, it's, it's easy to carve it off from the rest of the project. And that's why we gave it its own designated open space. Included in the package of materials you have are draft open space documents, including conservation restriction documents, documents to tie the ownership of the property to the open space, all those mechanisms you need in order to ensure that the open space will be protected in perpetuity. There'll be somebody who'll care for it, somebody who's responsible for it, and, um, and, uh, and it will be the lot owners here. The ANR lot owners, or the so-called ANR lot owners are not part of the open space ownership. It would just be the, the lot owners in, inside this portion of subdivision and as far as this, it would be these three lot owners. So we also had to submit a site plan. Uh, we, we submitted a, a shared special, uh, a, a shared residential driveway special permit application because these lots, in order to minimize the impact on the cutting of trees and the disturbance of use on Sanderson Road, were set one behind another, served by a, a common driveway. In order to do that, a special permit is required. So that application was submitted. We submitted a site plan review application because it's an integral part of the open space development approval process. It's in the bylaw. It's probably something you do automatically through process, but there it is. The application was required and we submitted it. Of course, there's a definitive subdivision plan. Ultimately, the definitive subdivision plan is the plan that gets recorded through registry deeds. It's the plan of, of which the, uh, land will be described when it's conveyed to the lot owners. So you need a definitive plan. It also includes the detail regarding the roadway construction, the drainage, drainage events, all that sort of stuff. So that's in the package as well. And certainly, not, not last but not least, is the scenic road application. The lots need access from Oak Hill Road, Woodcombe Ave., and Sanderson Road, uh, which have all been designated, as far as we know, as Chapter 40, Section 15C scenic roads. And we need, uh, to submit an application for permission to alter the stone walls where they exist, root trees, and to accommodate the driveways and roadways intersecting with the scenic roads. So, you know, ultimately where those will lie will depend upon the approval process and ultimately how the final plan gets configured. But we submitted them all at the same time so that all of these things could be thought about simultaneously, concurrently, and at the same time. So that's the, the background and Jeff is going to go through some of the details of the, of the plan as well. And we brought some of the old plans. We brought the yield plan, brought some of the older subdivision plans in case we needed to refresh anybody's memory. I never spent a lot of time with them, but we got those plans with us.
Thank you. It's a good segue, Paul. Uh, Jeff Bremer with Myson Grant Corporation. Uh, it's, yeah, I hope you appreciate it. I didn't know that they were going to come, but, um, they said they would possibly come as David Sanderson, Peter Anderson, uh, members of the Sanderson family. We're glad they're here. I'd like to go through some of the submission documents with you, uh, just briefly, and then you could always come back to them. We packaged it up, really have several packages. The first one looks like this and it's pretty much got everything that Paul talked about and then some. So it looks like this, got a little picture of the project down below. And in that is the applications that we just went through, the transmitter letter to you, the fee calculation, the check, a waiver letter, which I'll go over a little bit later, uh, the butted list. Inside this also is a narrative of the project in quite a bit of detail. I don't know if you've read it yet, but if you haven't yet, I would please ask you, we don't expect the hearings to close tonight, so please read it for the next time because maybe some of your detailed questions are in there. We talk about the existing conditions, geology, which in this particular case, you know, with the escar there and that big pond is very unusual. Talks about some of the soil testing that we've done on site. We are big time advocates of low impact development at Myson Bremer and myself in particular. I served, uh, for 20 years on the stormwater committee at DEP, so it's something that I, I grasp on. I encourage people to do it. So I go through a lot of detail of that. What is LID and in particular, how we apply those principles to this particular project. I go, I put some of the drainage report in here so you can get just kind of an idea of what I'm talking about there. We also have some supplemental information, traffic, uh, generation, trip generations for, uh, the three parcel project, uh, discussion on the sewer, which I'm going to talk about a little bit, water, and municipal service costs, public works and municipal service costs. And I added a little bit extra too because there's also a cost, there's also revenue as well. So I, uh, put some revenue together. Uh, Paul went over the, the multiple pages of, uh, conservation restrictions and deeds and so forth. And, uh, that's this report here. Also, you have a three-volume stormwater report, which you probably haven't seen, but I followed the important information from this report and put it in this one, so you don't need to look for this. If you did, this is what it looks like. It's in three volumes, the third one is a stone, which weighs about 10 pounds. Uh, and that only has the hydrocat report. So if you're not a hydrocat person and you don't understand that, it would be useless.
It has the water department scene.
The water department has seen it. Uh, Savos has seen it, Green International's seen it, obviously. This is, uh, volume one, which, like I said, is the outline of it. That's the one you would probably want to read. Volume two, though, is a made, this is the first time I've done this and it's due because I've been sort of asked to. Uh, this is the operation and maintenance report for the stormwater features. And rather than including a, a big volume that people have to walk around the site when they're trying to maintain it, uh, it's just a small little report. So it's a volume of, there it is. All right. I'm going to talk about this in several parts. We're going to go through a little bit of history, but I'm not going to labor there. Uh, and then I'll talk about how the plan was generated a little bit and then we'll go into some of the details of the, the infrastructure that we proposed. First off, uh, I'm not going to go through all the various five months of meetings that we had from July to November or December of last year where we developed this plan. But as you remember, just to refresh your memory, the plan is really in four phases, three, five phases, let's say. You get the phase one, which are, as Paul said, the ANR, the continuation of the ANR lots on Woodcombe Road. Phase two is the Edward Drive area. And, and this is probably how they're going to be developed. We don't know yet, but I'm speaking in probable, probable, uh, chronology of development. You get the ANR lots here, the Edward Drive area, and by the way, Bennett is a Sanderson relative. I think he served in World War II and Edward Drive is also a relative. And Alan is also a relative. So that's where the names come from. Uh, so Edward Drive is here, serves 21 lots. And then the, uh, Common Drive for Alan Drive is here. So this is one, two, three phases, and then there's a kind of an outlying lot there, um, that may be developed during the ANRs and may be held. So there's the three, five phases. So let's, let's go into that. Again, before I do that, let me just also go through quickly what the key features of the site are. We have a hundred-some-odd acres of runoff that comes off of Oak Hill Road, comes across, crosses a road, controlled and uncontrolled. Both, it goes over pavement in several areas, but there's also catch basins and, and pipe discharges illegal, but they're still there and they've been there. And there's no way anybody wants to stop that flow because there's a lot of flow that comes off of Oak Hill. There's also another, these 100 acres is total offsite, so then 40 acres is from Oak Hill. 60 acres comes in this way from the Orchard subdivision and other subdivisions. Comes through this wetland that's ancient, this wetland, and turns a corner, goes through the escar and spills into this pond. This is the, here's the wetland here, this is the escar right here. Now, this escar is unusual in several respects, mainly because it's so thin and narrow. An escar is full of sand, it's leftover from the glaciers, the glacier came around here, dumped a bunch of sand. This wetland eroded it, took that sand, it's over millennia, took that sand, brought it into this pond, and the various features of that happened, leaving this very steep hill going up, a flat spot, and then going back down again. You see escars a lot, they're usually serpentine and they're usually much bigger than this. So this is, this is what's so unusual. Uh, on the other side, topographically speaking, this area is generally, it's hilly, but it's generally flat, certainly the most develop, developable area. Uh, the field is here, this section here is the field along Sanderson Road, I'm sure you've all seen it. The tree, the road gets pretty close to the right of way here, there's a, a remnants of a stone wall, and there's some trees in this section that kind of buffers, uh, the, the field from, from the view of the Sanderson Road. And then the very wooded section on Oak Hill Road, uh, the type of trees, the, the soils, it's very, very dark through here, as you know, and there's a lot of trees. And then we're very susceptible, we really understand the comments of people not to change the character of Oak Hill Road and not to put too much effort onto Sanderson. And then we talked a lot about the density and whether it's 45 units in total. We dropped it down to 42, then we dropped it down, as you remember, remember, we dropped it down to 32. So that's the number that we have here, 32. And if you want to take the project in its entirety from before we came here, there were two lots here that were cut out and four lots up here. So it's really a 36-unit project all told. There's an AT&amp;T easement that cuts right through the middle. And that was represented by the AT&amp;T, their office amazingly is right here in Burlington, Mass. And, uh, they, it's an old DOD line. You, some of you probably already know this. Uh, it's abandoned, it's coaxial, and, uh, there's actually several lines out there because my backhoe ran into one, not mine, but we ran into one nowhere near the line, but we hit another AT&amp;T lot. So at some point, there were several lines out there. But this is the one that's, that is there and there's a current easement on it and you see there's no houses on it. And I'll talk to you a little bit about the AT&amp;T easement later, a little later. The objective is to get at least 50% open space. There's several reasons for that and we have achieved that objective. The main reason on my end is because if we get over 50% of DEP on a clustered type project like this, does not require us to test all areas of the site for septic systems to prove the yield plan. Uh, I didn't want to go up and down the escar digging holes, nobody really did want to, but it is a requirement that you have to have 50%. So that's the end of it. Obviously, we want to also maximize the open space as much as we can. So we, we meant to have a quick here. Where does the open space go? We talked about that. Certainly, you know, this, this is a no-brainer place. This is your escar, the wetland that comes in from the offsite, the big giant pond that has really no outlet, and, and, and then the area around there, and then the field, try to protect as much of the field. There's your open space and that's what your whole open space, uh, plan and, and regulations is all about, is to protect these kind of features. You saw some of the other plans where we are buffing into those areas quite, uh, quite, uh, strongly. This, this doesn't do that. All right, so now let's start developing a plan. So as the plan develops, let me talk about Edward Drive first. So Edward Drive, uh, comes in as a boulevard. So we've narrowed it instead of two separate roadway entrances. We're now with a boulevard with a, with a curved island in the middle. That island opens up here because these two bides have asked us that they may want to tie into that. I would imagine everybody thinks that would be a good idea, would take two curbs cuts off of Woodcombe Road and take them off the new subdivision. Now, the Anderson, the Sanderson's mine and, uh, these are recently built, so that would sort of be part of the project. Then once you get to this point, it basically looks around. This is very similar to what it looked like before. If you remember the topography where my hand is, is very, very, well, all of this is very, very flat and just on the other side of my hand, the left of my hand, is very, very steep. Okay, so what we've done here...
Who's left?
My, my left, over here. This is the steep area here. It drops down. So right here is a, is a cut and you see I'm cutting right through the AT&amp;T line. And right here is a cut and I'm cutting right through the AT&amp;T line. So very first thing I did is I called AT&amp;T and said I need it, have permission to cut in those areas, uh, or we got to change the whole plan around. And so I met with them and, uh, they said not only can we not worry about cutting, if you want to reroute it, you can, as long as you get from point A to point B. There's no real reason to reroute it. So, uh, they said fine with the cutting. And then subsequent to that meeting, uh, I met with them again with the final plans, gave them a set of final plans and said this is where we're actually going to do the cut and this is where this... They required us two steel sleeves to be put in wherever we're doing work. Captain Hechen said they will be there during the construction of those sleeves, uh, for them to have any access in the future. Wonderful people to deal with, really no issues at all. So that kind of solves that problem. Underlying all this, I also have no wetland filling, which some of the other plans did. There's no wetland filling at all. So as far, let's talk about, a little bit about, uh, utilities. Now, Noel Plan that we had, we had shared septic systems. That caused concern for various reasons. One of the concerns was if, you know, you can't cross a roadway, the roadway would be public. We all, there were a series of concerns. Savos had issues with it because they're concentrating the sewage. The board of health didn't really like it that much. We, we were running up against a lot of opposition. This plan gets rid of that. There's no shared septic system. Each septic system is on its own lot. Each lot will have its, a simple in-fee lot, just like any other lot in town, and you'll have your own septic system, including these three. So that was a huge difference from one of our original plans. We've done some soil testing out here. We were out there just a couple of weeks ago and water table was at two feet. So let's talk about what that means. Water table at two feet means I got to fill. And when I get to fill, I have to clear trees. As you, it doesn't take much to fill a fort, maybe spread it around, you fill two feet and you start clearing some trees in giant areas. So the problem with that, and as it turns out, is that old, our other plan that we had with the cul-de-sacs or whatever we had up there, that would, essentially, now that we see where the water table is, that would have decimated the place. So really from here to here, there wouldn't be a tree left.
If you have shared driveway.
If we had that shared driveway and a common septic and so forth. I mean, I wouldn't say no trees left, but it, it would have been a drastic difference from what we're trying to do here. This is a continuation of what was going on on Oak Hill and because of that and because they're separate, we can basically just cut the trees around the smaller septic systems and deal with each septic system individually and by itself. So that kind of solves a lot of problems at the same time. You will recall that we had previously, lot seven was where our open space was. And one of the brothers, Mr. Brown, Bill Brown, asked us to move it where the AT&amp;T line is right now. There's currently a trail there that takes you up a go-hill on Oak Hill Road. We've done that as well. It was no different to us.
So now all the driveways will come off of Oak Hill Road?
Now all the driveways come off Oak Hill. It's, there is a guy rail and portion of that, and so when the, Jim is here, but basically you'd have to fill up, to remove the driveway, you'd have to fill so that there's no need for the guy rail. So, um, in those areas, we, in the set of plans, I'll show you later if you want, but there is grading for each of those lots to show how that would be accomplished. Back to Edward, so that's sewer. Uh, the sewer for these three are also on separate lots. This is sandy and we haven't tested here yet, but I know by the soils that it's the best soils on the site, so I have no real issues. We did do some testing here, like I said, we hit an AT&amp;T line. And one of my concerns was we don't hit any wa, any evidence of water whatsoever. I wanted to do it in the spring. We were here all fall. The winter didn't allow us any time to go out there. It was hilly, this is not a good site to go do some testing in the winter. So we had to wait till the spring and it rained a lot. So we finally did go out there, we did some testing here, we did some testing here. And I'm pleased to say that I was a little nervous because if we did hit water here, this plan would be, who knows what would happen. We didn't hit any water at all. So the water table is static, it's the elevation of the pond, we're well above the pond. The plan works, so I could tell you that. We still have a lot of testing to do, but we've got the critical areas. Drainage, let's talk a little bit about drainage. We've endeavored to recharge everywhere we can. So every single house will have its own recharge system, that's number one. Uh, number two, we're returning all over the place instead of in specific locales. Uh, so that's a good thing for the, for the... Number three, as far as septic goes, uh, we're less than the limitation that Savos had to worry about originally when he was talking about the nitrogen loading. We don't have that issue here at all, mostly because we're 32 units and not at 46 units. So drainage is, because it's flat over here, we have an open swale, uh, which is, an open swale from this section all the way down to about right here. And then I just dump into inlets, drop inlets, and then where it's steep, obviously, I don't want to have open drainage, you're just asking for erosion problems. So it's a curved system all the way around here to this point here. And then the way the high point works out, there was no real benefit to have a small section of, of swale there. So instead, I put a rain garden here. So this is its rain garden to pick up this amount of flow, small amount of flow, but it is a rain garden and it, you'll see it when you first come in. So ecologically speaking, any of the homeowners can tell their kids, tell their relatives, tell their friends, that's a rain garden, it's good for the environment and so forth, just as you drive in. Um, the, this area here, there will, there'll be trees remaining because it's steep and I didn't want to deal with the erosion of cutting into that. This hill here will be cut down, we're talking to the conservation commission about that. That's probably right now their only concern, but they understand that and I've told them that from the very beginning, that that hill will be coming down 10 to 12 feet. They keep asking me about it, that's why I, I, they keep asking me if it's still coming down 10 to 12 feet and I keep saying yes, but we've been... down 10 to 12 feet, and I keep saying yes, but we've been talking about that a long, long time. There are some inlets from the back of these lots come down and go into an inlet system and so forth. This all gets discharged then, all this flow comes down here to a pipe system, and we have a three-stage system. We have a four-bay, which is essentially a temporary pond, very small pond, pretty much the size of this room. It spills over into a second cell, which is a detention cell. I didn't have enough room in here, so I go through a pipe, which is actually very efficient. We pipe it over to this larger cell. This larger cell contains the water, just like a bathtub would. If you drain, it's suddenly clogged, it holds it up. The rain stops, it discharges it, you guys all know that. The outflow for that is basically a concrete box with multiple-stage pipes for the different storms. The water goes into the different-stage pipes, and this is very unique, and I do have a picture of it. It's going to be hard to see, but I'll try to follow my pen. So this is the pipe coming in, here's the basin, goes into this pipe, into a gremian hole, then into another plastic pipe, high-density polyethylene plastic, into basically a fenced, a stone fence, and it's called gabion. And you may have seen it built, a lot of the highway departments build it. It's just a, kind of like a chicken wire fence, filled up with rocks. Inside that is my 18-inch pipe with holes drilled every so many inches. And then that hole is tipped sideways, so the pipe partially fills, spills out for 50 feet along that pipe into the rocks, onto the ground, natural ground, and then it flows over at least 50 feet into the wetland.
How deep is the...
The whole thing is this high.
How deep into the ground does it go?
It's above the ground. So it retains, it retains four feet, 194 to 1, five feet, 194 on the high and 189 on the low.
Right.
So this side is retained, basically. So it spills out, it covers a multitude of best management practices that the DEP wants. And that's the discharge here. That's where most of the flow discharges. On the other side, on this section here, we have a rain garden. Let me go talk about that a little bit. Allen Drive, we originally planned on it to come out here, and the lots were going to be, I think the lots were going to be in this side. The road was going to come here, and the lots were going to, back yards were going to face the field. There's a whole bunch of trees here in general tests. There's a 48-inch oak tree right on the side of the road, there's a big hill through most of this, there's a 36-inch oak, a 24-inch oak, and we just couldn't get a roadway to go anywhere. I could miss the oak trees, but then you would have all kinds of problems with site distance. So we moved, basically, this way, we had the wetland, so we kept moving it, and so that's why the entrance is here. And then it takes a turn, there's nothing wrong with that, it actually protects your view a little bit. It takes a turn, and then Allen Drive comes in, and this is very flat through here. So once you get to this point, you can see in both directions. That's why it does that.
And the only thing that's disturbed is the stone wall.
A tiny bit, and that stone wall is like one stone, right here.
That's where the orange spray paint is?
No, no, the orange spray paint is over here, that's what we wanted to do. Because it's down the road from there, you'll even see, it's even less of a stone wall. You would ask for a parking area in this area, so on the plans, you'll see. Now, I just twisted you around now, so you were looking that way, now you're going to look at this way, turn yourself around, here's the road. So over here, we have a four-spot gravel parking area right across the street from Lot 30, and next to that is the rain garden. So all this flow goes into that rain garden, and that discharges to, eventually to the One of Green's comments that just kind of go out in draft form has an issue with that particular one, so we may have to be addressing that a little bit later, just because of its location.
And did you just recently get the Green comments?
They're not even finally yet, they're just drafted.
Yeah, the lot comments.
Yes. Drainage here is A and R plan, so they just have the regular drainage. But all the drainage comes in, this is where it gets incredibly interesting, and I've never had, I've been doing this for 31 years. All the drainage comes into the system here, this giant pond, and I calculated for the 100-year storm, it does not exit the pond. It just sits there for the whole 100-year storm, 100 acres of flow sits there, which is amazing. It's a giant pond. Now, we did talk to David, who wrote a note to me, and it was such a well-written note about how, some of the history of that pond and that dam, that I included it in the actual stormwater report, and it's also in this thing as well. So if you haven't read it yet, you could read David's version of how that...
Yeah, we have that.
You have that. So that dam that was basically partially rebuilt by the town some years ago, I just lost it, kind of protects this area right here, and nothing really leaves it. So now, here's my challenge with drainage. Because I have no flow that leaves this pipe before development, and I'm adding development to it, and then I have no flow after development, even including all this, do I even need any drainage? Technically, no. I did anyway. So that's what I did. This system here does deal with all of Edward Drive, the increasing flow. That rain garden deals with this. So even though I don't need to, or we don't need to, I did anyway because I talked to Green International a long time ago, and they basically said it would be a good idea if you could.
Right, because 100-year storms happen more frequently.
Well, you could have a 120-year storm, something else can happen. So basically, every site should be able to maintain its own drainage system. This would essentially be using a giant natural system, which currently is a retention basin, is a retention basin. And DEP would front on that, although it would be allowed. So anyway, I did do full drainage, and fully complies.
Jeff, why don't we stop at drainage? We've gone over here a couple of times, so why don't we stop there, get a little feedback from the boards, and people in the neighborhood who are obviously concerned about it.
I'm trying to make it long-winded, no problem.
No, no, it's fine. This has been a long journey, it's been five or six months, and you have to say that you've listened to most everything we've asked you to do for this plan. It's been a pleasure to work with you to come up with an open space plan. That's, that is this plan in front of us. I have, my first question about it is the actual ownership of the open space. We've always sort of wanted our open space to be community open space. Everybody gets to use it. Home ownership or condo association ownership, or however you want to put it, is not the best, what we feel is the best use for the, for the area. We want the town of Littleton, all the residents in the town to have access to that. Is that something...
That's our problem. Because the zoning bylaw says that it has to be in a form of ownership, and one of those potentials are to convey it to the town, we didn't assume that the town would take title to it, so we submitted the documentation so that we wouldn't be left with, we wouldn't be left with no option in our application. But it's, I think it's entirely up to the planning board to decide the final disposition of that, and then ultimately, town meeting if it's going to be accepted by the town. But we understand that's one of the potentials in the bylaw.
Actually, could I answer that? We have filed with Conservation, we had two meetings with them and a site walk, and they voted at the last meeting, they haven't done much, but they did vote that they want to take ownership of the open space.
It's appropriate since they control...
They have all the Oak Hills, and they walked, they took a walk through it, as anybody would. They weren't all that interested in taking a walk, there was a lot of bugs. I said, "Come on, you got to see it," and they were like, "Thank God you showed it to us, because it is spectacular."
You know, and from a marketing perspective, I have any problem with it either. There's a ton of open space subdivisions in this proximity. I live in one, I understand it, but I get to explain it to people, and that they're concerned about, "Well, I'm a beneficiary, I'm a trustee, how does this work?" So I have no problem from a marketing perspective saying, "Don't worry about that land, there is no homeowners association."
Yeah, and homeowners associations elsewhere have started falling apart, like the Cobb land, they don't meet anymore, so it's much more viable.
We'll go with that.
Yeah, we're talking about both open space parcels, parcel B too?
Yes. Yes, and parcel B and Conservation and Paul are going to get together soon.
Not during my vacation.
And they are going to work out the leasing or the licensing arrangements to keep the field as a field.
Yeah, the parcel B, I wouldn't hesitate on approving the open space two, or recommending approval for the major open space inside of the main parcel to Conservation. But parcel B, I'd like the town to have that as its own entity, not Conservation Commission.
Well, it's still, it's still up in the air whether or not we're going to try to buy those three lots too, so that'll be decided.
Right. I don't think they can, Paul, can you rule on that?
Because Conservation Commission is not...
Can you go to the town, it's not a restricted land?
Oh, you could, you could put community...
Well, there is already a requirement in your zoning bylaw that says all the open space has to be protected in perpetuity by a conservation restriction. So regardless of who, I don't think we care which board in the town of Littleton owns the property, but it's six of one, half dozen of the other, because it will first be protected by the CR.
Right, perpetuity, and they do have agricultural land already. I mean, it's, I think it's appropriate, it does go to the Conservation Commission, otherwise general municipal. I mean, you want to keep an agriculture, you want to keep a perpetual conservation restriction. The management of Oak Hill is already under them. Even the Conservation Trust has given lots on the other side, and we turned it over to the Conservation Commission.
We could figure that out at the end. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't just going to go to the Conservation side.
Whatever, whatever you want.
Do you have any questions, Jerry? At this time?
At what, for what piece?
For the, for the whole subdivision right now.
For the whole subdivision?
Yeah.
Do you want to cover your exemptions or your...
Waivers.
Waivers.
Sure. Now, some of these are going to need responses from Green International.
Yeah.
Because they're very technical, so...
Excuse me.
All right, there's...
Are there multiple ones?
Six.
Yes. In the middle of the package.
I'm going to go real quick. The applicant requests a waiver of 8% on minor streets to maximum 10% for a tiny little distance to make migrating work in that area. It's a very small distance, you won't even notice it. Long 8% are worse than a short 10%, so I don't think they're going to have a problem with it. They've seen my profile for months. Number one. Number two, this is a big one for you. There's 20 lots on a single access in the regulation. You can waive that, we're asking for 21, right here. The K-value, K is the, basically, when you go over a vertical curve, a very tiny K would be like a roller coaster, ooh, you feel that? We don't have that at all, but for our speed, we're at 22 miles an hour, and we need a waiver. You don't, the regulations don't define exactly what speed each road is, so I told you, we meet the 22. So you would have to say that that's an acceptable speed limit, basically. It's not a limit, it's that that's an acceptable K factor. Again, on the way to the green, I don't think they have a problem with it, we've already talked to them. Concrete curb instead of vertical grating curving, we're not trying to deal with the city here, you know, vertical grating is more appropriate for downtown. This is a K-cord. Catch basin locations, we ask for a rain garden, this is a comment, we have to a rain garden in this location instead of a catch basin, seems like a no-brainer too. And then the last one is street trees. We didn't understand, I didn't understand your regulation. It says every 40 feet, street trees. Seems a little excessive, so I don't know if you meant every 40 feet on one side of the road, that equates to every, you know, every eight feet, you put two trees in, you know, 40, 40, 40, 40, if you stagger them. We'd like to put them next to each other so that it looks more like a street pattern, so I asked to go every 75 feet, two trees every 75 feet.
On each side of the road.
Yeah. I didn't know, your regulation doesn't say 40 feet both sides or one side, it doesn't really talk about it, so...
Just every 40 feet.
So I asked for even less, so if we go two trees every 75 feet, it's actually...
What about sidewalks?
Sidewalks one side. Sidewalk here, all the way around, I'm sorry, sidewalk here, all the way around right here, we have that swale, so we have to go on to the properties, and so there's an easement, sidewalk easement up to the properties.
On the, on the 75 feet for the two trees, how does that relate to the house lots? Does every house lot get a...
They're in the right way, so...
But does every... Wait, wait, wait. We want a sidewalk in the cul-de-sac, there's no sidewalk on Sanderson Road.
It's very narrow.
This here, you mean?
No, I, no, I'm just saying...
There's no sidewalk proposed here.
That's, your proposal, that's going to be a public road, right?
This, no, private drive.
No, no.
This is public road.
Public road.
Yep.
So we're going to have to maintain those sidewalks.
Yeah.
Like, there's no sidewalk, any, to get in there.
To get in Wickham Road, there's no sidewalk. However, however, it is part of the theory of the design, I will say, that this is a walkable place. There are trails all the way through here, and the whole concept here is that you can walk on a trail and right to your house on either a hard escape sidewalk or soft escape sidewalk all the way around. So everybody will be able to just walk out the door, either jump on a sidewalk or go right onto the trail. It's great for that respect.
Pete, do you have any questions? Don?
Yeah, I have questions. First of all, I'm glad to see the way you've developed this, and the San Antonio's been very sensitive to the area. I mean, it's open space residential design, but the state now suggests a natural resource residential design, which is, in fact, is what you did. You first protected the escar and the kettle hole, and that's very good, and that's their current smart zoning approach. So it's nice to see that, and people say, "Ah, it's like designing a golf course." I see you've designed a couple of golf courses. So it's nice to see that protected, and it's good to see the open space going for the Conservation Commission, so it gives some integration with what else.
That's not set in stone that it's going to the Conservation Commission, let's just get that out of the way.
You don't need to get into that, that's how you know.
Plenty of time to decide that, okay.
I'm making my point, but please listen. So I have heard from a variety of different bidders, they have questions, and these are basically, I guess, the people on the left-hand side from Old Orchard Drive.
You're guessing, or you know these people?
People have contacted me, just let me speak.
Pete, let them speak, let's...
I mean, people have legitimate reason to contact individual board members, and I hope everyone gets contacted by the public. But there are some, are some questions here. Yeah, as you know, there's interest in a no-cut zone along the edge of it because the Old Orchard Drive is close, and in particular, I was asked to ask about 20-foot no-cut zone throughout the length of that. And could you, could you first speak to that?
Sure, we provided it, 20 foot, starting here, going to the open, so obviously that's not cut, picked up right here, going all the way, all the way to the road.
Okay, and so there's a 20-foot buffer throughout?
Which we talked about with the bidders, and we said, "We would do it if we could," and I, and I was able to.
Right, and you've been very accommodating, so, yeah, I truly appreciate it. Another concern, mostly from there, is thinking of the Allen Drive with some blasting is going to be necessary, and...
This one?
Oh, not so much that, but I met there too, because there are people roughly across the street. The concern in general is, what sort of guarantee do they have about the blasting? And I know people put down mats and so on, but thinking of our quarry, there are occasions where some stones have gone through some garages and so on. So what sort of measures and actions?
You have to appreciate the degree to which blasting is regulated and the amount of pre-blast survey, which is required before anything occurs. And in having, having been near a blast zone, I can personally attest that in my case, they came through and photographed my building, my basement, before anything was done. They provided me with contact information in the event that there was any damage to They provided me with contact information in the event that there was any damage to my property, that who I could discuss it with. So any blasting that has the potential to affect any budding property owner would be subject to a pre-blast survey. And I would imagine there's also regulations at the fire department.
Yes, there is.
Where they need to check in with them and, and only blast with their prior permission, am I missing something?
Yes.
Is there bonding or, I, I'm just curious, I, I don't know, which is.
Don, we went through all of this up at the subdivision off of Wickham Ave where there was blasting up there, and we had bonding in place, the wells were tested free and post-blasting, so there's a whole, has.
But this is, this is. The question, that's something that you'd have to deal with under the regulations, building codes.
That's really going to be a planning issue?
It was a question from.
Well, it's just a question, just make sure.
Yeah, I think I represent. This isn't pejorative, this is just a question, and, yeah, I mean, the reasonable question, so, yeah, since.
Bottom line is, there's so much, this is all sand, this is all sand and gravel.
Right.
There's not going to be rock there. This is a mix of everything, so it's got sand and gravel, it's got, we've seen veins of sand, we've seen tight soils, and we've also seen some rocks. So up here would be the only place that would happen.
But you don't know that you're blasting for sure.
Oh, my God, I don't think we're going to blast.
Okay, great, let's go.
And I know it's Green International made some comments on the trails, and as you've already mentioned, Bill Brown is involved, he's the steward for Oak Hill. And Art Lazarus is director of stewardship for both the Concom and Conservation Trust, and there's someone else by Rick Finley, maybe they could help look at that.
Bill and I communicate all the time, he sends me stuff, I send him stuff, we have emails, he's, this is his design, basically, so.
Right, and, but I know it's Green International, I have some concerns, so hopefully he'll, he'll get a chance to look at that. One of the questions I had, and this is also the trail area, you know, it certainly goes by the Esker, and whereas, you know, one trail loops around to Homestead and down. It seems to be sort of a natural thing that people would try to go from the south side where the opening is on Wickham Ave, either side to the Esker area. I know there, you've mentioned that, I guess that's maybe a sixteen, seventeen, eighteen lots, you know, it'd go on the right of where those lots are in the cul-de-sac, between that and the pond. Is there any way of having a passageway through there? I know there's topography concerns.
You talking about from here to here?
I'm talking about just going up straight on.
We do that, that, that trail exists.
But to, to the right, between.
There's a trail right along here.
Right, going down.
Right over here is down, you're not going down over here unless you have a kite.
Well, I was talking about between the, the left-hand side of the pond and the right, exactly. Is there any passageway, I mean, that's a natural thing, people will see the way out and they may well want to.
From here, no, you're not going to go from here to here, it's impossible. I mean, it's not impossible, it's straight down, that's.
Okay, well, that was basically a question.
You can't really tell them the plan, but yeah, that's straight down, and walking around the well and it's not, it's not really the.
Right.
You've got one foot here, the other foot here, it's not really the.
It's steep, yes.
We don't want to do any work that close to the well, so.
Oh, okay.
We put it up here.
So that was a question.
Now, on the other side, once we get around, we're going through the field, there's a parking area, we come around, we are getting close to the well here, where it's high. We cross over the dam, we come up, and this is where Green International has some issues, and we just have to talk about it. We're on top of the berm, so we're building a berm, we're walking on top of the berm over one of the spillways, so they're saying, oh, can you walk over spillway? And then back out to Wickham Road, so that was one of their concerns, we'll deal with that.
And I think there was a bridge there at one point, along the route there.
Can I ask? Anybody in the audience have?
Thank you, that, that's helpful.
I don't know, Peter hasn't had any chance to.
Oh, I've heard enough.
And I have, I have one more comment to make. The, I think every, every part of this really hits the bullseye, almost every part of it hits the bullseye of what we were looking to achieve with the open space plan. Except for two things that were concerns of mine. Lot thirty-two is, is being built on, and I was hoping that that would be left empty for wildlife corridor. And I noticed you got lots three, two, seven, I was hoping that one of those lots would be open as a wildlife corridor for, to allow wildlife to go from Oak Hill down, down across Wickham. I didn't see that, and I still express that I'm, I'm hoping that you'd consider that. I know it'll, it'll play, it'll play, it'll play into my decision.
What we do is we have, it's not really colored here, and I probably should color this part right here, this is the AT&T easement that we're not changing.
I saw that.
Currently, if you've been there, that's the one section that you can't walk through, because it, it hasn't been cleared up. But the deer walk on the easement, you can definitely tell, they're all over this easement. So we're going to be improving that, so that could be wildlife corridor. And then this is a natural wildlife corridor. That, that's all green, and, and, you know, I know you're looking at a plan here, there's fifty acres of land here, so you, what you don't realize is when you're standing here, that's like a lot, that's another lot. You know, it's the width of a, of a developed lot, this is Heather's lot right here, that's where she develops. You know, so it's, it's not as narrow as you may think, certainly the deer can go there, they walk in people's backyards, so.
And the wildlife is likely to go from what looks like drainage from that pond to the south of Twenty-Ninth, Thirty, Thirty-One. That's where probably most of the wildlife will go because it's depressed and.
And you talk about wildlife, if you really study it, and you probably have, you're not just talking about the large mammal either, the deer and the angler, but you're talking about critters, the salmonanders.
Hey, listen, we got a four-hundred-and-fifty-pound bear that uses my driveway as a wildlife corridor, all right, so let's, let's cut off the.
So anyway, we have, I can believe we have addressed that, that's my point.
Sure.
Anybody in the audience have any questions right now?
I still want to express my disappointment because the reason you don't, you have deer and so forth in your backyards is because they don't have any wildlife corridors.
That corridor, I think that we have had the corridor.
They'll find, they'll find a way.
Hey, there's something across the street from lot thirty-two on Wickham Ave, so how would that work, you know?
Anybody have any questions? Going once, going twice? Mr. Khan?
Not really questions, but a couple of comments. Last fall, when the first plan was presented, it was kind of congested, but I see a huge improvement here, and it really looks good. And the best thing is, as a taxpayer in town, we're going to receive open space for, for nothing.
He has nothing. Well, not for nothing.
He's listened to what we had to say, and it's been a reminder of what was first presented.
Well, it, we've worked together, we've done a great job. We spent a lot of time on it.
Anyone else, anybody, is anyone up? I do have one other. You've got a twenty-foot buffer going on the side there, what about the rest of the lots? Are you able to give everybody in there that twenty?
Well, you can see a tree line right here, so that, where is the tree line?
The existing lots in the, the main street.
Here, these lots?
The ones on Sanuson, we're coming down the front.
These here?
Yeah.
Okay, this, it's McDonald's line, Mr., I forget his name, he's talking to me, we're on the, we're on the, he asked us, I asked him to put it in writing, because it's not my decision, it's the Sanuson's decision, that we, he wanted a buffer in here. We, we've had some tree lines, we're going to move the tree line, so I asked David, who's representing the family, because it's really his decision, and he agreed to do that. I've already called him and told him that we're, I can't remember his name, but I think he ran for select one, but.
Is anyone?
Is that it? No, no, someone lives here, no, somebody else.
Talking about Chris, Chris.
That's Chris. Chris, right.
Right.
And so we've worked it out, so the bottom line is, you asked me.
Anyway, so.
He, he is contacting me, and yes, and then these two butters right here want the driveway, that's a concern, and then Heather, you know Heather, she was here at the last meeting, she didn't want this all being developed here, she didn't mind that one lot, she didn't want the road coming through here. We did her, so she should be happy.
I just want to make sure everybody has.
I don't think you have too many here, that's because they like the plan.
Okay, all right, anyone else will continue this till.
Okay, one more.
There's someone.
Yes, sir.
Where's the back? A little fifty-seven Wickham, and where the drainage ditch comes down through, and the, the pond did overflow in, I believe it was eighty-one, and filled my basement. So it does happen, on more frequent occasions, the groundwater comes up. And that's, that's a concern, that, you know, does this development impact the, the rise of the groundwater every three or four years, five years?
Was the question whether it backflowed from?
There is some, it's not just groundwater, it does backflow, and that, that's what my model showed as well, and Jim and I also talked about that. The book, the good news is, from a surface point of view, we're not increasing the rate of flow, so we're not going to make it any worse, still going to possibly back up. On the other hand, because this is a tributary to all the wells, the town wants us to infiltrate as much as possible. All that infiltration eventually becomes part of the groundwater. We're not going to be really raising it all because it's over a gigantic area, but we are trying to infiltrate. It's like a two-edged sword, we, you need to infiltrate so they can maintain the water supply, but that may affect impotentously downstream. So.
Anyone else?
Just let you, give you an update, Green has done the direct report to you, they'll find out that, and they expect final comments early next week, and then Jeff and Green will work together on.
Need a month at least.
At least a month or?
Well, you're committing a month, it'll take a month.
It'll take July tenth?
Yeah, but I wouldn't, wouldn't want to go see you in two weeks, we won't accomplish much.
So we'll put you on for July tenth, what time are we?
As long as we set the date, we're, we're good.
We'll put them on for like eight o'clock?
That's good. Can I ask you one more thing while you're doing that? Jim is here, I don't know if he's going to be able to be here on the tenth, we are asking for scenic road special permit, so you may want to specifically ask him while the hearing's open, if he has any issues.
What's that? Just a permit.
Scenic Drive.
Permit.
Permit, but he should talk on that, I don't know if he's going to be here on the tenth.
And for the shade tree aspect, the trees have to be posted, so.
Right, we have to post the trees.
There's no trees.
Well, the tree removal, the stone wall.
There's no trees.
Oh, okay.
So, I, I thought it was for Allen Drive, Edward Drive, sorry.
No trees, there's a stone wall, but no trees.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
You would have pictures of all that stuff.
All right, so.
Green mentioned.
Eight-thirty?
Well, we have that concrete property, Rose Street at one-nineteen, so.
Eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty. You want to hear from Jim now?
Do you have any issue with the?
The stone walls traditionally, I mean, they have their access to the property, we usually.
Sounds like it's a nice stone.
Try to reuse the stones that are there if they can, I know some of it's very low stone wall, I know what Sanuson is, I think Oak Hill, most of that's steep drop-off anyway.
All right, where's your handle in a minute here?
I just wanted to go on where I knew he was here, so.
Sure. Although something should be posted, we feel just, so people are aware.
No, only if there are trees to bring them in, or they.
Stone walls are.
But so, Green International did mention trees to be removed, so it was necessary.
Okay, let me, let me read, there are trees to be removed, they're outside of the right-of-way.
That's why.
Not public.
Okay, so there are no public shade trees.
Move to closed discussion.
All right, we're done.
It's quite understandable how it fits.
No, we can't close discussion, we're done for this evening.
Yeah, we have fifty-two.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for a great plan, by the way.
Thank you.
Yeah, being very receptive, listening to everyone.
We have eight-thirty telecommunications special permit for Newtown Road, Verizon Wireless renewal. I have to read this one too?
Yep.
All right, we're moving on, public hearing, wireless telecommunications facility, four-fifty-one Newtown Road, Bell Atlantic Mobile of Massachusetts Corporation. Please clear the room. Gentlemen. Thank you. Four-fifty-one Newtown Road, Bell Atlantic Mobile of Massachusetts Corporation, LTD, DBA, Verizon Wireless. Town of Littleton Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, June twelfth, two thousand and fourteen, at eight-thirty P.M. in room one-oh-three of Town Hall at thirty-seven Chadd Street to consider the application to renew a special permit and/or for any other relief deemed necessary pursuant to MGL Chapter forty-eight in the code of the Town of Littleton zoning, wireless telecommunications towers and facilities. Section one-seventy-three through one-twenty-eight through one-seventy-three through one-thirty-three. Property location, four-fifty-one Newtown Road map, R three parcel two. Property owner, AT&T Communications, Inc., applicant, Bell Atlantic Mobile of Massachusetts Corporation, LTD, DBA, Verizon Wireless. The applicant is seeking to renew a prior special permit under the wireless telecommunications facilities by law to allow the equipment upgrades at the existing lattice tower at four-fifty-one Newtown Road. The application and plans can be viewed at the Planning Board and Town Clerk's office during their business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated. Town of Littleton does not discriminate on the basis of disability. Further assigned translation of this hearing will be provided at the hearing impaired upon request by contacting the Planning Board office at nine-seven-eight-five-four-zero-two-four-two-five, one week prior to the meeting date.
Thank you.
Good evening, Greg Sampson from Robinson and Call here on behalf of Verizon Wireless. We're essentially looking to renew a special permit, we have several, well, we've got a panel antenna on this site at elevation sixty-five, which was the subject of a special permit in two thousand and one. And then we also have a set of twelve antennas at elevation one-twenty, which predate the bylaw, so we're actually looking to pull those into the existing special permit for the, to have one special permit for all our facility. But as part of that, we're also going to just replace nine of the twelve antenna panels, just as you can probably imagine.
New technology.
Yeah, new technology, smartphones, they need chaos, so.
Awesome.
That's essentially what we're looking to do, if, I'm happy to discuss it, I don't have a big presentation.
Okay.
Are you going to, are you going to pull off the old antiquated, antiquated?
Horns, you can't, it's too, it, when your predecessor came in and said it would damage the structure, we could take the horns down.
Right, we don't, yeah, we only own, we only have the panel antennas at one-twenty, we don't have any things else to do about the, those, that part of the tower, so we can't take.
You're taking something off, you're putting something on.
Right.
I don't see a problem.
You're replacing it with the same footprint, the same space.
Yeah, in fact, I mean, the mounting brackets stay the same.
Make a motion.
Wait, one second, Maureen, has he paid, are all the fees are paid?
Yep.
We're good?
I'm good.
We're good, all right.
Donate some open space?
If I had anything.
I'll stand a motion to renew the, the spell, special permit.
We have a draft decision, and Greg took a look at that, didn't have any concerns with it.
No, we don't.
Yeah, it seemed good.
So I'll poll the board, are all those in favor of renewing Bell Atlantic Doom Business Verizon Wireless application for four-fifty-one Newtown Road? So you thought by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, that was easy.
All right, just for the record, though, this is a Verizon phone, and I get no reception in here.
It should be a little better once.
Let's say upgrade the service.
Let's go, yeah.
You've got Verizon, you get nothing?
I get, I get shut out, isn't it great? Not here, no, no, not here.
I have Verizon, I can't get it in my own house.
You want, you want?
It's a dead zone.
My work's perfect. So I'm talking about my internet, there's no four-G here, let's go.
All right.
All right, thanks very much.
Thank you. All right, we have an eight-forty-five public hearing vehicular retail sales, one-seventy Air Road.
Where is that?
Then again, I might go outside and find out, I do actually get.
One-sixty Air Road, I know where that is.
One-seventy. All right, give us a brief update, idea of what you're proposing over there. Well, we can listen while Maureen talks.
Do I have to read, I got to read this one still?
Wow.
This is a public hearing?
It's three in one night.
I cherry-stones this one-seventy.
This is a public hearing for the vehicular retail sale special permit, one-seventy Air Road. Town of Littleton Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, June twelfth, two thousand and fourteen, at eight-forty-five P.M. in the room one-oh-three of Town Hall at thirty-seven Chadd Street to consider the application for a vehicular retail sale special permit for one-seventy Air Road in Udestro B zoning district pursuant to MGL, excuse me, C forty-eight, section nine, and sections one-seventy-three through twenty-six, use regulations, schedule of the Littleton zoning bylaw. Property owner, J.L. Realty Holdings, LLC, applicant, Jeff Armento. Applications and plans to be viewed at the Planning Board and Town Clerk's office during their business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed applications and plans should appear at the time and place designated. Gerald Portarte, clerk.
So I'm Jeff Armento, we own the building at one-seventy Air Road, we run an existing car wash distribution business there, we wash vehicles there, we sell install and service equipment all over New England, Eastern New York, et cetera. Most of my employees, including myself, are gearheads, and, and our idea is to, to get a license to be able to sell vehicles at the location. Our thought process is this would be a hobby business, we might have one or two vehicles mainly parked inside overnight. There's a couple of spots that are, kind of a long Route two A there in the front, if we park them outside, do we park there? It would mainly be internet sales, no, we don't expect any customer traffic at the location, you know, maybe somebody comes and sees a car inside on a Saturday, and that's it, and again, it's mainly, it's not going to be a, a vehicle car dealership. Again, this is going to be a hobby add-on business, I would expect ten to twenty cars tops a year to be sold overall.
Is it antiques and classics or?
That's what we would do, we're all, again, we're all gearheads, we're not planning on doing any restorations or rehabilitations on the facility. Our plan would be to identify vehicles, we're in the car wash business, I have customers that perform detail services, rehab cars. Obviously, the economics for me work really well, to have them do that work, we would get cars that need to be cleaned, maybe new tires put on them, paint buffed out, that kind of thing, at an auction, bring it to them, let them do the work, come back and try to sell it for a small profit. Mainly work for just, again, hobby fun type stuff.
Got any cars now?
Right now, I'm all motorcycles, but the car thing is, is going to be coming back, because I'm moving within town, I live within town.
Yeah, be max of three at one time?
Yeah, I can, I can pledge that we would never have more than three, probably just be one.
You have the pressure washing stuff there right now, right?
No.
Pressure washing.
No, no, I actually, I think this gentleman is behind us, covered buildings, and he has a pressure washing distribution.
So you're, so you're in the front building?
We're right in the front.
You have nothing to do with this, Mr. Coleman?
No.
As far as ownership, because I've done business with Mr. Coleman in the past, he's a friend of mine, I wanted that known up front, so that no questions are raised while he.
He has no interest in.
How do you, will you be working on the cars inside the building?
We will not be doing any work on the vehicles at that facility.
You just want to park them there? You just got to park them there?
Yeah, we would park, again, we would purchase a vehicle at an auction, identity, or, you know, even for a private party, but mainly at auctions, we'd be buying vehicles, maybe a motorcycle that needs to be, you know, maybe has faded paint, needs new tires, just cleaned up, detailed.
Theoretically, you'd put it on the road for people to look at, other than that, it's just, I don't see a problem with it.
I'm curious, why, why does he need a special permit?
I don't know.
Okay, because you adopted a new bylaw last fall.
Yeah.
That restricted motor vehicle sales from all aquifer and water resource areas.
Because we want it as a special permit, this is what he's doing.
And attached to, I think you talked about, like, vehicle service was not allowed.
So it only, it's only allowed by a special permit.
Right.
Where in the district where it's allowed, aquifer, water, or relay district is not allowed, so he also has to go to the appeals board for relief.
Which is next Thursday.
Right.
Wait, so I have a question. If he sells a car on the internet, and it happens to be parked at that location, is that still a retail sales outlet?
Yeah.
No, no, whoa, whoa, whoa!
Regardless of where he gets the customer.
He, he came in and asked for what process would allow him to do that. I recommended he, you know, do this and appeals board, that way he's never.
But he's going the right way.
He's an enforcement officer.
It could be purchased by somebody driving by, I don't know if that's.
Oh, so you, that's what I'm saying, like, because when you say retail, to me, that means you are retailing from that location, meaning if I wanted to buy a car from you, I would go there to buy a car.
My expectation is the one or two vehicles that we would have parked there during the day only, which, again, they won't even be out on weekends, so the inside. The likelihood of the. The likelihood of them being purchased by a drive-by is slim. I think these are going to be much more purchased by, we're taking nice pictures, put online, and that's the more likely purchase. But it definitely could happen, somebody.
All right, all right, that's all I'm asking. That's all, it's the only problem.
Okay, got it.
But the other thing that could happen is he could get busy. You could have 10 cars. We don't have to restrict how many cars you use. It's just the concept. You know, you could say.
I would have a problem if you restricted it, because I don't plan on that being my business.
But you're saying three now, but if it takes off, it could be more. So it's more or less the concept is what we're really approving. Do we have a problem with the?
Well, then, with any conditions that you choose. And he's also going to need a Class II sales license from the board's selectmen's office, which is a state requirement, so.
There's a bunch of requirements.
So there's a bunch of hoops to jump in. Ours is no problem.
So he's got to come back?
Not us.
All right, so we can approve it.
Right. Does anyone have a problem with this? I mean.
No.
No, but I do have a question. Yeah, I see what SMID was the GPR planned for the area. And it says when somebody, you know, Air Road, and it shows where you are, which is mostly built out. But it says open space plan. What does that refer to? Is that? Yeah, it's this, this is open space plan. This shows, this is parcel A, which has, yeah.
That one, that one I know. That was different parking levels for, different parking schemes for that size of building. And the planning board approved one of the schemes that didn't build out all the parking that could have been built for that.
Right, and most of the parking here, what confuses me is the first, this is parcel A. It looks like it's under different ownership by the trailer truck trailers there.
That's on the other side.
Yeah, that's not him.
Yeah, that's not him.
Well, but this is parcel A. It's just confusing. It's.
Okay, so.
I mean, I have no, no problem with what you're proposing. It's low impact. It makes, makes sense. Just, I didn't understand this, yeah.
We just purchased the building in December.
So, so your ownership is really that pretty much constrained building and the parking with it?
Correct. Yeah, it's like.
Do you have any issues with it? Yes.
My name is Jim Coleman. I'm the, one of the two owners of C&amp;P Realty Trust, the location you just talked about behind it. And at one time, we did own this lot that this gentleman was on. And how do you do my?
Hi, Harry. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. I haven't met him either. Just a couple of questions, and I'm certainly not, not opposed to it. And one question would be the prospect of signage, and the second would be, where will they be parked?
Yep.
So perhaps you could respond to that.
So my, my plan on signage would be to keep that as limited as possible. I think the state is requiring me to put a sign of some type up. My plan would be to put it on the building above my New England Car Wash sign. You may have noticed it's above the door, access door. So we have a sign of that size, really not to attract attention from the road. That's not. It's not, this is not my primary business by any stretch. And as far as parking, I mean, you obviously know the parking very well, but should the vehicles be parked outside, they would be right there, which are really going to be behind these bushes.
On the paved surfaces, it should be.
Yeah, absolutely. Not adding any paved surfaces.
That's an easy answer, and a good answer, because that's the fire judgment very clearly.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not planning on expanding anything, taving anything, taking down bushes, trees. I'm not.
Putting in the west, getting in the, rotating out of the class windows.
Actually, that might be. No, again, this, this is really more of a hobby, and to do it, you've got to get all these permits, so.
I have not much to go on record. Certainly, from our standpoint, we have no problem with this whatsoever. I think, Mike, you were on the board when we came in.
Yeah.
A thousand years ago.
He seems like it doesn't have been.
It wasn't 30.
He was, was the chairman then.
As you get older, it looks farther back. But anyway, we've had, I think, a very good relationship with the community up there. It stayed exactly what the planning board had wanted it to be, I believe, when we went in there, signage and everything else. And I'm sure this gentleman would be, this gentleman would be a good tenant, neighbor as well. And our concern up there is really simply to maintain what we have there in the same looks and all. It's work for us. It's work for the community. We just don't want that to change. That's not what it's going to.
Yeah, and that's absolutely not.
You've done a wonderful job of cleaning up what had turned out to be a little bit of a rundown front there. And I'm sure nobody was happy about that. So you've done a great job the last couple of weeks. They've cleaned it up, and it really looks like a million bucks, so I would certainly not be opposed to anything that they want.
Yeah, it's a crack, but not gone both through the Lisa.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Congratulations.
One comment I would make, if you're going to put a sign up, we have a draft signed by law that we're going to be looking at this year. And it's a red soiree of our bylaws. Take a look at it.
Okay, I will. Absolutely.
So if you're complying with.
So the board, we want to send you off to the next board. So I want to take a motion to approve the.
Aye.
The draft of the retail special permit. I wanted to show you one thing on it. It says no vehicles will be allowed to park on unpaid surfaces. That's part of our bylaw. Anyway.
Special permit, all the time.
Anyway, I want to take a motion to approve the vehicular retail sales special permit decision that we had in front of us.
Right, where the condition says no more than three vehicles at one time.
And the water department waited.
That's what you, that's what you wish for, the water department went with.
He's parking cars in the exact same place.
No, no, I get it.
He's not adding any pavement.
We're good.
Three is good with you?
Yes.
Okay, proud.
Now, we have a special, three vehicles for say, I mean, there's more than.
At one time.
Three at one time.
Three displayed at one.
Okay.
That seems reasonable.
Everybody good with this?
Some good.
Are those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yeah, and also Martin asks if we want this as a standard, which seems reasonable, number one. I mean, that was one.
Semi-annual ground law, it's already, you already have monitoring up there, right? No monitoring up there?
This first paragraph, I don't know, one.
It may be required if the water department wants to monitor the site. Okay, it's hard. You're too easy. All righty, thank you. Good luck, by the way.
Appreciate it.
See, they don't allow.
Listen, I, that's fine. You should have told the guy that when he first came.
We were getting the best we could out of the body.
I don't know what that means. But how is that, what does that mean?
He shouldn't be allowed to do any of that.
He's got, he's got an auto body shop there. He parks cars there all the time. He parks cars every year.
He parks all the pavement part. Now he wants to do that whole thing.
He's got cars in that yard there.
He's not supposed to.
He does. What's going on?
Roads won't weigh in. Roads isn't.
Okay. Are we done?
Almost.
Oh, we have to do Martin's evaluation.
Yep, let's see, we.
What kind of evaluation?
It's on TV, so.
Usually I do it, but I decided to let everybody do it.
Before we get to that, we have a farmer's row was continued till nine o'clock. They've asked to continue it again and provide an extension deadline to.
Then we put them on for the 10th?
July 31st. Put them on the 10th. So put them last again.
Again, yes, please.
Not ready once again.
And we're going to try to meet once a month for the summer?
Mm-hmm.
Unless we get really backed up, right?
Works for me.
Okay. Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Big package, but it's worth it.
It's, it's the first Thursday of the month, right?
What, July 10?
Second.
Second.
Second Thursday, July 10.
July 10, yeah.
Okay, all right. Anything else?
I'm going to check my schedule.
Evaluation form, okay.
And the important thing here is you want to finish this evening, so it goes in a timely fashion.
Marin, this note here says that we need to vote on payroll procedures?
Um.
We are agreed to that. You missed it.
I'm recommending that you not take any action on it. That way, the homeowner has to sign payroll and.
You don't want just one person signing.
So it continues.
Yeah, so we continue.
Okay.
So you want us to, what we should probably do is each of us fill this out and take the average. You want to do it that way? Unless you want to do it verbally in front of them, why don't we just do it verbally?
Works for me.
Hey, I get my review done verbally.
I think she wants it completed, so it can get submitted.
Okay, communication. How does, how do you think Martin does with communication?
I have no complaints.
Yeah.
I've looked at it, and I would think, yeah, it could be all fives.
I see. I've always given her all fives, but let you guys.
You know, technically, you can't do that. Nobody can be all fives.
No, not necessarily.
Don't they do all the government employees on a curve like they do everywhere else?
All right, what do you want to give her?
Fives.
All right.
Right. And, and she actually.
Personal management?
Personal management?
She puts up with us, yeah.
I don't know what she does day to day. Do you, that's why you're chairman. You're supposed to be doing the outside evaluation.
Go and check. She's in there. She's got a feed up. She's having coffee. We'll give her a four. She's got to have, she needs a little improvement somewhere.
Does this affect your compensation at all?
No.
It doesn't?
It has to be completed in order to get the steps.
Is this something each of us fills out individually and signs? Each one of us, you get all five, or you get one?
So she can get her step increase.
Yes, but it doesn't, but the rating actually doesn't impact.
Financial management? How's she doing? She, we're still in the.
Well, are we under budget?
All right, we'll give her, we'll give her, we'll give her a four for that.
Five, no, she's under, she's under budget.
I think what you want to do is make sure she comes out excellent at the end, so if you start doing all fours, you got issues.
Oh, my God.
Okay, planning an organization, definitely a five. Leadership, problem solving, innovation, five?
Yeah, I mean. She's the most senior person.
Customer service, time management, everybody loves you when they come in here. There's a five.
Technology competence. No one's used a smart board or anything yet around here.
She uses whiteout on the computer.
4.9?